Good afternoon and welcome to the June 12th City Council Meeting. Sitting in as the Community Redevelopment Agency to start the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak in this meeting, please come out and fill out a card with the clerk and hand it to the clerk when you come up and you have three minutes to speak. Do we have an approval of the minutes of the last meeting of April 17?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? unanimous, thank you. Citizens to be heard regarding items not on the agenda, anyone who wants to speak to items that are not on this agenda. Okay. New business, item 4.1, approve the 2022 Annual Financial Report.
Good afternoon, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is a presentation of the CRA's Fiscal 2022 Annual Financial Report by the CRA's External Auditors, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. I'd like to introduce John Reelmeyer, Partner with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, who will present the report to you.
Good afternoon, how was everyone?
Good afternoon.
So as part of our financial statement audit, we issue five reports. I'm going to just run through each of them real quick for you. The first one's going to be the Independent Audit Report. We issued an unmodified opinion. That's a clean report. That's the highest level of assurance we can provide. We say things are materially correct, not 100% are absolutely correct, but they're materially correct. The next one's going to be the Government Auditing Standards Report. This, we had no instances of noncompliance, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies. So again, a clean report. The last one is the Management Letter. This one had no findings on it. Last two is the Local Government Investment Policies Report. The CRA participates in the pooled funds with the city. Those funds are in accordance with Florida Statute 218, 415. There's no noncompliance noted in that. Again, a clean report. The last one's the Compliance on the Redevelopment Trust Fund. This is what the expenditures are in line with for the CRA. Again, we had no noncompliance noted. Other communications, significant accounting policies can be found in Note 1 of the financial statements. Accounting estimates are used to prepare your financial statements. Those include the allowance for doubtful accounts, risk management accruals, pension, OPEB. We did not encounter any significant difficulties during our audit. We had no disagreements with management. Your accounting team is amazing. Jay and Monica doing a wonderful job of doing the accounting for both the city and the CRA. So wonderful to work with. We had no other findings or issues to note. No uncorrected statements in the event we found something, but it was below trivial, we might propose them to adjust it. We had no instances of that. No items were discussed prior to our retention and no internal control deficiencies noted as well. Would you, it was quick?
Okay, do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jay. Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item 4.2.
Affirmed allocation of $65,000 to fund an art installation with the Mercado.
Good afternoon. Jay Matthews, CRA Director. Staff is seeking approval to allocate $65,000 toward the art installation at the Mercado. A total stipend of $75,000 is recommended, and the city's cultural affairs budget will be taking care of the remaining $10,000. The east side of the building of the Mercado, where the Cleveland Street meets Gulf to Bay Boulevard, features four panel areas, and the city is issuing a call, or has issued a call to artists for the mosaic installation in this area. There will be 11 circular planters in the area as well, in addition to the mosaic art that will be installed. Collectively, these surfaces in the Mercado can be transformed to create an immersive art experience that can be enjoyed for all in a Plaza space. So looking for approval for the $65,000 for that project.
Do you have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Jay, I just add, how are we doing with responses from artists?
Very well. Initially, it wasn't, because we kept it to local, per the original call to artists, and then we opened it nationally, and then the response got better.
And when do you think you're going to decide on an artist and get started on the artwork?
I believe it's closed or soon to close.
Okay.
So it should be moving rather quickly. Cultural Affairs is really spearheading that, but I am on a part of the panel that will review those applications so soon.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Does anyone from the public want to speak to this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 4.2?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed unanimously, thank you. Item 4.3, please.
Affirmed Downtown Gateway Business Economic Recovery Grant Program.
Okay, so Jay Matthews, CRA Director. Staff is seeking approval to allocate $500,000 to fund the Downtown Gateway Business Economic Recovery Grant Program. This is a new program that I have created. The purpose of this program is to provide a one-time economic recovery grant, up to $25,000, to assist businesses, business owners or tenants located in the Downtown Gateway, specifically on Gulf to Bay Boulevard, that have suffered economic loss directly related to the Cleveland Street Streetscape Program or Phase III Project. If approved, these grants will be available for up to $25,000 to be used toward rent and/or mortgage and/or public utility payments on behalf of the business. Grants will be awarded to business owners and tenants of commercial property within a Downtown Gateway District on Gulf to Bay Boulevard, and if at the max, it could serve up to 20 businesses.
Any questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Gulf to Bay or Cleveland Street?
Gulf to Bay. Gulf to Bay is what's completely closed and you cannot get through at all, and I've gotten the most complaint.
Gulf to Bay.
That one. What about any on the Cleveland Street, actually, like on Cleveland Street, where the entrances to the businesses were very restricted? Does that apply to those businesses as well, or no?
That's not how I wrote it, because we have problems with staff getting out, having to climb over mountains to get to that area, and I come to work using Cleveland Street, so it's not closed.
Okay.
And there's really no, I'm not going to say there isn't an impact, but when you have, you can't even get to the business, and those businesses are the ones that are calling, letting us know the impacts, it's dire.
Okay.
Certainly, I'll be willing, if there is a need, to consider expanding going forward, but right now, I think the immediate need is here.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
How do they demonstrate a loss or qualification for this? I mean, and, go ahead.
We determined that we look for so many years pre-construction in sales, you know, or in revenue.
Okay.
Particularly for the types of businesses that have resell to us.
Okay. And is it a first-come, first-served?
I would say yes, but I think we have enough to cover. That's why we said all 20.
Those ones, yeah.
That's why the amount is there.
Okay.
I think it's that many, so that's why, so we can certainly open it to look at case-by-case basis of any business down there, but the main focus area is for this.
Where it was closed, yep.
Where it is closed.
And is there a deadline that they have to apply by, a deadline?
I don't believe. When this is approved, we'll establish the parameters. We just want to get the program approved before we can establish, but we want to really launch these as soon as possible. July 1st is the golden launch. All of these have approved today.
Great. And you could almost go out door-to-door to those ones and just say, hey, this is available?
We have identified the addresses on Gulf to Bay that would be, I guess, eligible to apply, so we definitely plan to do that, just didn't want to put the cart before the horse.
Great.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4.3?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed unanimously, thank you. 4.4, please.
Affirmed Restaurant Operations Essential Equipment Micro Grant Program.
Staff is seeking approval to allocate $175,000 to fund the Restaurant Operations Essential Equipment Micro Grant Program. I will say, just off that, I've gotten a lot of calls about small things, about, you know, that could be a quick fix, or also still a stretch for some restaurant owners. We didn't have anything in place for that, and I've seen over the country, I've looked at several states and cities that have this type of quick program, for instance, a freezer door, you know, broken or I need to replace, you know, a freezer or refrigerator, something like that. And so that's why I created this program. Again, the purpose is to provide micro grants, up to $3,500, to assist food and beverage operators with the purchase or repair of the essential equipment needed to operate after the establishments. This is for brick-and-mortar locations in the Downtown CRA. Up to 50 of these micro grants will be available if approved.
I am so pleased to see the direction that the CRA is taking in having very responsive grants, responsive to the specific needs that we have, rather than generic grants that not, that might not be what are needed, and then they just sit there and are not granted. So kudos to you, I really appreciate this.
Thank you. I've spent time speaking with all business owners throughout the CRA and also starting in North Greenwood as well, so that's why it took a little time. I just really wanted to hear what people needed.
And I want to say the same thing, thanks, because I know, originally, we didn't set it up that way, because we didn't want to have anybody on a grant if they moved out taking equipment with them, but I know there's a lot of restaurants that need repairs to their equipment, and this will really help, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just, we'll get, you know, when, when things get up and running, we'll get a report of what businesses applied for the grant and spent it on.
Absolutely, okay. I can provide it monthly as they come in.
Okay.
Supply my report.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Agenda 4.4?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed unanimously, thank you. 4.5, please.
Affirmed Facade Interior Improvement Grant Program.
Okay. Staff is seeking, Jay Matthews, CRA Director, I'm sorry, I have a respiratory issue, but staff is seeking to allocate $1 million to fund facade and exterior, interior, I'm sorry, improvement grant program. And the purpose of this program is to provide grants up to $50,000 to assist business owners and tenants in improving the exterior or interior of their commercial establishments. Grants are available for up to $25,000 for interior work as well as exterior work to improve commercial ground floor spaces. We've had facade improvement, but we want the inside to be up and ready to have all this great traffic that's going to be coming down here soon, and so the reason for this modification of the previous facade program is to do this, to be able to cover the inside as well of our downtown businesses and have them thriving and looking as far as the outside.
Any comments or questions on this? Yes.
For the record, there's been some confusion, if you can please clarify that. The exterior grant also includes the urban garage doors that a lot of the businesses use to connect the outside with the inside, right? For the exterior grant, it includes the garage door openings?
I would believe it would, if it's a part of the facade. Yeah, you can see it, it is visual, yes.
Okay.
On the ground floor.
Yes.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda 4.5? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed unanimously, thank you. 4.6, please.
Affirmed Additional FTE to CRA for Fiscal Year 22-23.
Jay Matthews, CRA Director, last but certainly not least, asking for the trustees to approve an additional FTE for the, an additional CRA specialist who will focus on stakeholder relations and engagement, both on the commercial side and the residential side of things. Originally, I've spoken with you all about expanding our framework and our structure to be able to take on all that is coming with, I guess, the park, the Mercado, and also North Greenwood. With that, I was going to wait until our new budget year, but we really need that other person in place now. We have a great response to applicants for the two CRA positions that are already posted, and just adding that third one will help us be able to use that same pool of applicants to choose a third person. So seeking someone to help be out there and work with stakeholders to get the word out about what we're doing, to also help me get word in about what's needed, and so that's what we're asking for today.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Anyone from the public want to speak to this? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Item 4.6?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed unanimously, thank you. Director's Report.
Okay. So the first item that I'd like to talk about is North Greenwood. So on May 23rd, the Pinellas County Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners voted to approve a resolution adopting the Northwood-Greenwood Community Redevelopment Area Plan, creating a redevelopment trust for a period of 20 years and establishing the county's tax increment financing contribution rates, which was set at 95%. So our next step as a CRA would be to develop the process for establishing the community, I'm sorry, the Citizens Advisory Committee, the CAC, that's now required to accompany CRAs. We need to create the candidate interest forms and applications, as well as outline draft outlaw, bylaws, I'm sorry, for the CAC. We need to outline roles and responsibilities and plan trainings. I did get great insight from our partners over at St. Peter's, who've already set up CACs, so they're helping us out as to what those next steps look like for establishing this Citizens Advisory Committee. Additionally, last month, Mr. Mayor held the Mayor's North Greenwood Chat at the North Greenwood Rec and Aquatic Center. From that session, several citizens and stakeholders signed up for one-on-one sessions with me. The North Greenwood Chat is what I called it as well, and from these sessions, they were very well attended and allowed me to really understand what's important to many members of the community and how we can, you know, move forward with planning for the CRA coming on board. Next, I want to get some staffing updates. Already shared, we have received 25 applications for CRA specialist positions, and we're moving forward with interviewing those. Now, three positions, thank you. Our goal is to have our new CRA staffers onboard by July 15th, hopefully, so interviews will be scheduled hopefully by this week, and we'll start those next week. Great happenings downtown. Since we last met, we had Cuba, a natural beauty, the Clyde Butcher exhibit, as well as El Arte. That grand opening was at the library on May 12th, well-attended, live music, great food, amazing event. Thanks to everybody who supported and came out. That exhibit is up and running through October 31st. Please check it out. Living the Culture Series kicked off as well with Taste of Ethnicity on May 20th in collaboration as celebration of World Diversity Day. This month, we continue the series with our Pride celebrations, as well as Juneteenth, which is led by the Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition, and those celebrations will run for Juneteenth, June 14th through the 18th, which is Father's Day. Placemaking, we're excited to announce that we're collaborating with the Clearwater Community Sailing Center. Their Winds of Change program is amazing, with beautiful artful sails that are decorated and hand-painted by students, and so those sails will be adorning small boats, which will serve as planters in Station Square Park. We had to work out some logistics as it relates to installation for those, but the goal is to have them installed by the end of the month. They're very beautiful. Can't wait for you to enjoy those. And Wednesdays through, I'm sorry, through August 30th, we'll be having Yoga Village sponsor, or I'm sorry, they will host yoga. If you were here last Wednesday, you may have seen that. Yoga in Station Square Park, Wednesdays at 6:30 PM through August 30th. We're also excited about, of course, the opening of Coachman Park. We like to announce Coachman Perks, which will be taking place the first two weeks of the park's opening. The vendors for Coachman Perks are downtown merchants who have signed up to offer deals and all kinds of discounts for those who can spot or show a sound ticket. And so we have a website. The website, you'll see the logo, as well as the specials next to that. So all of our merchants down south, for the most part, have participated. We have over 25, I think, that have signed up to offer discounts for those with sound tickets. So we'll see if that continues after the first two weeks, but the first two weeks is just a pilot. That's all I have for now, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Matthews? All right, thank you very much. Good meeting. This meeting is adjourned. I'm going to re-convene as the pension trustees. And do we have an approval of the minutes from the April 17th meeting?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed unanimously, thank you. Any citizens to be heard regarding items not on the agenda? Not on this agenda? Okay, let's move on. New business, 4.1.
Except for January 1, 2023 Annual Actuarial Valuation for the Employees Pension Grant.
Good afternoon, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director.
Good afternoon.
This item is requesting your formal acceptance of the plan's annual actuarial valuation dated January 1, 2023. I would like to introduce the plan's actuary, Pete Strong, with Gabriel Roder Smith, who will review the valuation report with you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think you should all have a copy of our hard copy report in front of you. If you could open that. For the record, my name's Pete Strong. I'm with Gabriel Roder Smith, and we've been the actuaries for the plan for more than a decade now. Very happy to serve the plan. The plan, I do want to say, is one of the best-funded plans in the state. Continues to be, even with the disappointing year we had during 2022, continues to be one of the best-funded plans in the state. If we could turn to the executive summary on page A-1. The contribution for the year for fiscal year '24 is up a bit from fiscal year '23. You can see from $12.8 million to about $13.55 million, mainly driven by an increase in payroll. Payroll is up about 7% from 2021 to 2022, covered payroll. I think a lot of that is inflation-driven, and so right now, the only portion of the contribution that's required is the normal cost. Because the plan is fully funded on a smooth asset value basis, there is no payment on the unfunded liability. So the only portion that you have to pay is the normal cost, which is the cost of benefits being earned in the current year, 2023. That tends to stay a relatively constant percentage of payroll. So if payroll moves up, in this case by 7% this year, the contribution's going to move up in tandem. And you can see we're pretty close as a percentage of pay, 13.61% last year to 13.41, down a little bit, you know, which is a good thing, but it's up as a dollar amount because of the increase in payroll. The plan does have a healthy credit balance, which could be used at any time, and actually, a small amount was used last year because there was a change in benefits during the year that increased the contribution towards the end of the year, and so a little bit of the credit balance was used last year. But it still went up with interest, from $33.8 million to $35.6. At the bottom of page A1, we break down the contribution by group. We've been doing that for about the past three or four years. You can see for the non-hazardous group, we went from $4.1 million to $4.25 million. For police, we went from $4.77 to $5.13 million, and for fire, we went from $3.9 to $4.16. But all relatively constant as a percentage of pay. Turn to the next page on A-2. There were some changes in benefits that were made last year. No changes in assumptions during the year. We finished phasing in last year, the reduction in the investment return assumption, that was, on a sliding scale, moved from 7% down to 6.5, and we're still kind of sitting right at 6.5 right now. The changes in benefits that were made were to firefighters, to add a cost of living adjustment back that had been removed in 2012, and also on, for general employees or non-hazardous employees, to change the vesting from 10 years to five years, and to increase the benefit multiplier from 2% to 2.5%. Those were measured in impact statements done towards the end of 2022, so they changed last year's contribution requirement, not this year's. Looking at the top of page A-3, there was a net actuarial loss for the year of about 28, or 21.8 million. Most of that, you know, my first thought when I read that number was, well, it's because of investments, but most of it is actually demographics. Salary increases averaged about 9.16% on average during the year. I think a lot, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of that's inflation-driven, but, and the average assumption that we have in place is 4.32. So about 5% extra above the assumption caused liabilities to go up, because, you know, all of the pension benefits are based on final average earnings, and rejection of final average earnings is what's used to calculate the liability, and so those feature, those salary increases affect all past benefits earned, so it increases the liability more than expected, creating an experienced loss. We also had lower mortality experienced than expected. That's been a trend in this plan for many years now. I've got a chart I'll show you to, for the last few years, to compare that, but we expected a decrease, if you applied the mortality rates across the board, we expected a decrease of 760,000 retirement benefits. No, I'm sorry, I got that backwards. We expected a $1.16 million decrease, and we only had a $760,000 decrease, so about, only about 2/3 of the mortality experience that was expected.
That's good news.
The return on the investments.
That's good news.
Good news. Yes, people are living longer than expected, yes. But it does create an experienced loss for the plan, because liabilities grow more than expected. The, there was a small loss on the asset side. The return on the market value was negative 14%, but the return on the smooth actuarial value of assets was 6%, or just over 6%, 6.08. We expected 6.5, so the 6.08 is what's used to compare to the 6.5, and we only have a small loss on the asset side. The funded ratio is now 111.98%. This is also based on the actuarial value of assets. That compares to 113.67 last year, so down a little. Not counting the credit balance, it's 108 versus 110. Now, based on the market value on page A4, we had a pretty significant drop, and this shows why we smooth assets, because the last few years have been very volatile. Very good year during 2021, and a disappointing year in 2022. The market value-based funded ratio is 98.8, so we slipped just under 100% on a market basis. Last year, the market value-based funded ratio was 125%. So that shows how that negative 14% return can really swing things, combined with a loss on the liability side. If we could turn to page B-5, just a quick breakdown of the liabilities, I won't go through this whole page, just want to mention that the total present value of all future benefits in the plan is $1.3 billion. The total liability attributable to past service is $1.12 billion, and that compares to our total smooth asset value of $1.22 billion, which is how we get to our funded ratio of 108.8% at the bottom of the page. Turn with me, please, to page B-20. The mortality experiences, I told you I had a little chart I wanted to show you. If you look at the first column, it's the actual mortality experience and reduction in pension payroll each year, whereas the right column is the expected reduction each year. And you can see consistently, mortality has beaten the expectation, or mortality has been lower than the expectation every year. This is a good thing for the retirees. Retirees in this plan are living longer than average, using the statewide mortality assumption that's used by the Florida retirement system. But it does increase the liabilities a little more than expected each year. But I actually recommended to Jay that we continue to use a more conservative mortality table as a secondary measure, because the mortality in Clearwater has been better than expected. We're required to use the same mortality tables, FRS, but because mortality has been better, we've been doing a side calculation using a more conservative table, and if we applied that table, the contribution would be a little higher, about $14.5 million instead of the $13.5 million. So you do have a large credit balance that could help offset that, though. Looking at the chart on page B21, you can see that the main thing I want to point out is the funded ratio here has been consistently at or above 100% pretty much since 2015. The one year that we fell below was just before, just before COVID hit, as of 1120. And I'll pause there to see if there are any questions.
Any questions?
If we go back to page B20?
Sure.
Well, it's really good news that people in Clearwater, our employees, are living longer than the state expected numbers, our retirees, that's fantastic. Should we be putting more money in there so that we're, we have enough to pay these people that are living longer?
Using a more conservative table, the plan is still over 100% funded. The normal cost would be a little over 14, about $14.5 million instead of the $13.5 million we calculate. And I think historically, in many years, the city has put in more. And I think historically, in many years, the the city has put in more than required, more in line with that more conservative mortality number. So I think it has been past practice to do that, which is why the credit balance, credit balance has resulted from extra contributions above the minimum required. That is now up to 35 million, you know, and extra money that's been put into the plan. So I, yeah, my recommendation is to to put in a little more than the minimum, but what that does is build up your credit balance. And building up the credit balance is good because the, really with the plan size, the way it is, over a billion dollars, you know, and the required contribution being only, I mean, compared to the assets, the required contribution is relatively small, about 13 and a half million. So, you know, what's really driving things here is the investment return. So if the investment return falls short of expectations, you have that credit balance to to kind of buoy you and keep the contribution at a reasonable level. So, yeah, my recommendation is is keep contributing a little more than the minimum because of the better than expected mortality.
And we make that decision when we look at the budget?
Yes.
Okay. And do we consider things like, so we're severely understaffed. And so as we are out trying to hire employees, if we hire employees that are in their 40s or 40s, 50s or whatever, and they work 10 years and get vested, I mean, is that something to consider? You know, that they're going to be retiring earlier, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, they would be retiring with a smaller pension benefit too. So so, you know, the way mortality works, it's it's law of large numbers, you know, it's it's spread out over, you know, when you have a large base of people, you know, some of the people live longer than expected, you know, it's spread out over the entire group, you know. So and and people with smaller benefits aren't going to add as much liability to the plan. So people hired in their 40s or 50s are are not going to materially.
Not going to skew it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments right now?
One last thing I wanted to discuss was your investments. If we could turn to page C dash three and how we smooth assets. If you look at this chart, this is how we develop the smooth value of assets. The market value is going to swing up and down. We've had, you know, ranges, you know, from negative 20 to plus 30% over the last several years. But we smoothed that, you know, to keep things less volatile. The total investment return on the market value is in line E1 there. It was negative 190 million last year. We expected the plan to earn 87.9. So you have a total amount, a difference between what you expected and what you actually earned of 278 million that's being smoothed over a five year period. So 20% of that is 55.6 million. That's what we're recognizing this year. And if you look over the diagonal, that's what will be recognized over the next four years as well. We also have three out of the previous four years were positive years that were smoothing in gains. When we add those, we get to a total phase in this year of negative 14.65 million. Add that to our cash flows at the beginning of year actuarial value and and we get to a final actuarial value of 1.22 million. And we have recognized earnings on the actuarial value of 73 million versus the negative 190 million on the market value. That's how we developed that. It's a it's a smooth value basis, so it it helps with the volatility control. And on page C5, we show the history of the investment returns going back to 1986. Over all years, the average return on the market value has been 8.7% in this plan. The average return over the last 10 years has still been 7.4, which handily beats the 6.5% current assumption. Now, last year, when I was here, I I told the trustees that I I believe 6.5 at the time, a year ago, well, it might be a little bit high looking forward over the next 10 years. But with the changes that's happened over the last 12 months with interest rates and with now current forward looking models, 6.5 is is right in line with the reasonability for a forward looking assumption. Actually, I I would say it's even a little bit conservative. If I take the plan's asset allocation and run it through the 2023 capital market assumptions, I get about 6.7 to 6.75 right now. So 6.5 is is right in line and a reasonable forward looking assumption.
Any questions or comments?
Mayor, if I can, just a brief comment, just to underscore what Pete was saying. You know, sometimes when we're we're looking at one plan, which is our plan, right? You know, we're not typically looking at other plans in the state or other plans in the country. But I just want to iterate Pete's point that we have a very, very strong, healthy pension plan, much stronger even than other well-recognized, healthy plans. So, for example, the Florida Retirement System is one of the largest public plans in the country. Their funded ratio right now is around 82%, and I think most people would agree that they're in pretty good shape.
They're using 6.7, which is a higher return than 6.5. If you guys were using 6.7, your funded ratio would be even higher than it is.
Exactly. And so I just want the trustees to know that we are in very, very good shape financially. That's a good problem to have. And so as we see things like market volatility, as we see things like people living longer than expected, you know, we're actually in a very good position to weather a lot of these changes. So it's just, it's a credit to the city and I think hopefully gives our employees confidence to know that we will have a very solvent plan for them now and into their future.
Yes. The biggest risk of the plan is investment risk because the plan is so well funded, you know, and the investments, you know, you have more investments exposed relative to your liabilities because you're so well funded. It's a good problem to have.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. 4.2, please.
Approve the new hires for acceptance into the pension plan. Good afternoon, Billy Kirkpatrick, HR, looking for your approval to accept the new hires into the plan.
Any questions or comments? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the new hires.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, thank you very much. 4.3, please.
I approve the following requests of employees James Halios, Parks and Recreation Department, Matthew Jackson, CRA Department, and Mariana Pass. Parks and Recreation Department's investor pension is provided.
Any questions or comments on this? You have a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 4.3.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, thank you. 4.4, please.
Approve the following requests of Lyle Adams, Parks and Recreation Department, David Bruno, Police Department, Jimmy Evans, Public Works Department, Brian Karns, Police Department, Jeffrey Mayhar, Parks and Recreation Department, Estrella Murphy, Police Department, Kurt Rodriguez, Police Department, and Thomas Wilcox, Solid Waste Department, for regular pensions as provided.
Any questions or comments? Do you have a motion?
Motion approved, agenda 4.4.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, thank you. 4.5, please.
Determine trustee's expected rate of return for pension plan investments for current year, each of the next several years, and for the long term thereafter in accordance with Florida statute 112.66 per 9.
Good afternoon, trustees, Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is requesting the trustees' determination of an expected rate of investment return for the current year, each of the next several years, and for the long term thereafter as required by Florida statutes on an annual basis. Staff is recommending the plan's actuarial assumption of a 6.5% rate of return net of investment fees as the trustees' expected rate of return for the current year, next year, and for all years thereafter. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Have a motion? Do we need a motion on this?
Oh, sorry. Motion to approve agenda item 4.5.
Second.
Oops.
I need a motion that determines the rate, because that's the request. What is the rate, Jay?
6.5%.
6.5%. Okay.
Yeah, the motion to accept the rate as recommended.
Motion to accept the rate 6.5% as recommended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Let's start the work session, June 12th, Clearwater City Council Work Session, and we will start with Public Works.
Select one of the three concepts for the proposed new city hall project.
Good afternoon, Tara Kivitt, City Engineer. So I'm very excited today to talk about the city hall project. First off, I want to give you just a little bit backstory. At your previous direction, we went back to our architect and had them add the third option of an all-in civic center type city hall, which would house everyone in MSB and in the current 600 Cleveland. So a little bit later, our architect team will come and go over those three options. Also included in your in your agenda packet was a condition assessment of the current municipal services building. And we did that because, as you can see, two of these three options are continuing to utilize the MSB. So we thought it prudent to do a condition assessment of the MSB. Overall, it is in decent condition. It's about CAT 2, CAT 3 wind speed. They estimated about 13 and a half million dollars of that we could phase out over the next five to 10 years to basically extend the life of that building so it would better align with constructing a new, smaller standalone and/or connected city hall that will be talked about later for options one and two. So that kind of gives us a touchstone. We haven't really taken a hugely deep dive in that cost estimate. There will be some repetitive costs. Wanamaker Jensen did include in options one and two some renovations to the MSB and the 13 and a half million that Long and Associate proposed, a lot of that will be overlapping. So it it, you know, could be overlapping as much as 10 million. But at least we have an idea of what it would take to then extend MSB for another 25 years since we're building a new, you know, if you decide, a new smaller city hall. So our goal here today is for you to look at these renderings. Obviously, we want you to concentrate more on the three different options, you know, as far as location and your priorities versus the specifics of the rendering themselves. Because our next step, once you do make a selection today, is we'll go back and the architect team will then work on two different renderings of a complete different architectural styles so then we could pick one of those. So if you pick option one, they could go back and and give you two to come back later with two different looks for that type of building. And then I know there's been a lot of discussions about Largo and Dunedin. And as you know, as you may not know, our city hall was built in 1964. MSB was built in 96. So just recently, Dunedin opened their new city hall. They were replacing a city hall that was built in 1966, so a little bit newer than ours. Their project was around 22 million at 39,000 square feet. Largo's city hall was built in 1976. They are in process of constructing a big civic center. It includes commercial parking garage. Their project is about 81 million and 90,000 square feet, but much different than ours. It's really hard to, they're not comparing apples to apples because they do have commercial parking garage. All of that is included in their 81 million. But Largo obviously has a smaller workforce. I couldn't find exactly what, I think they have around 350 FTEs total, so significantly less than ours. That does not mean that all 350 are in their city hall. I had a hard time, I couldn't find the numbers for that. But but we're looking at anywhere from having in the new city hall 55, 60 people to the third option, which is all in, would be, you know, over 300, around 320 people. All right. And keep in mind, options one and two, actually all three options, we need to retain the parking garage, the MSB parking garage to support the project. All right. Any questions for me before I turn it over?
Questions or comments as of now? Yes, sir.
So the MSB parking garage, do you have an update on if we needed to expand that? Can we put another floor or two on that?
Highly unlikely. I I don't have a firm answer for you on that. Right now, we've got quite a bit of, they can see, we do counts during the day and, you know, and everyone is at work supposedly and accounting for the police vehicles. We've got room to accommodate the new people that would be coming over from 600 Cleveland as well as visitors for the for the short term. You know, for some reason, huge growth or we're getting a lot more visitors than we ever envisioned. The existing MSB parking garage should accommodate, especially at night. You know, most of the staff are gone and so the biggest visitors we get is typically during council meetings and that would be at night, so that would all, we're envisioning it that it would all work out well. Plus, the new project does propose some on-street parking that would help also.
Other questions right now? Okay.
All right, well, we have Jason Jensen from Wanamaker Jensen Architects to go over the options.
Hello. Glad to be be here again, working with you. Their staff has been amazing to to work with. We've done a robust process to get to this point, meeting with all the stakeholders, all of the different staff departments. And we did something that is truly amazing is we had all those people in the same room twice. So thank you to city management to help organize that. But that allowed us to dive into this process and have a strong basis for everything that you have now and understand where you're going and to really get a sense of vision and visioning for that future of where the different departments are going, how collectively the city is moving and what type of city hall and municipal services office complex do we envision for the future. So thank you for that process. Joe Burri is the project manager, working with with us. As part of that process, we also have Mary Alvarez helping us as well in the audience. So a robust team working through with you all. Go ahead. So taking all that input from the stakeholders is what we came up with some of these initial diagrams. No, we don't have circle building, but we want to make sure that we are thinking about, what is the center, what is the heart of the the facility? And I think when you, when you look at this, you see the public space and the community, your public service is at the heart. So looking at the strategic plan and thinking of superior public service and how you come into a facility, what is also the user experience? What is creating the community sense, not just with your staff, but also with the community at large? And how do we make this a city hall that is for the community, a community city hall instead of a a staff-centric city hall, per se? So you can see the the lobby, the public space is at the center. And then we think of these different departments as neighborhoods around that center. And then the public interface with each one of those departments is really enhanced in that in-between. So you see the the darker colors have that public interface. And that's where we place all of the conference rooms, all of those type of spaces. So no longer will you walk into the facility and then be walked down a hallway to get to a conference room. The the conference rooms will be on the public space. So then they're also readily available for other departments, other activities, because we're thinking of it more as a community space. So three options we'll take first is the option of the existing building with an addition. So we'll look at this, just to orient you, in white with the MSBs, the existing building. We have in color the addition attaching itself to the lobby portion of that facility and having presence on South Myrtle. You can see there's a small plaza that we're creating with this scheme and the Penniles Trail is opposite of the the building. They can each scheme, you'll see a different take on public space outside of the building. So we see this as a public room, a town square, if you will, that we can also program for each one of these facilities. This gives you a little bit more view of that that town square leading up to the building, the addition to that. And you can see we've added, you know, again, each one of these is one concept, but we added a placeholder for doing something to address the aesthetics on the existing building so the the addition and the existing building can can come together more cohesively. We know that that's that's going to be an intensive effort on this particular option to how do you make one building out of two and for it to not look like an addition but really look as one building. So that's really the the crux of of this one. But we do want to make sure that we emphasize the the quality of presence for a city hall approaching it. And if you're giving, you're giving a speech, each one of you, I'm sure you can't wait to give a speech in front of this. So, you know, we want to make sure that there's a large, you know, area that you can gather. That becomes a a space that is. That becomes a space that is thought of differently than you're thinking of, imagine, right? Like, the spaces that we think of here be potentially more civic, more, you know, organized in a different way. It allows you to separate events, you know, that you might have an event at this location that's different and you're not cannibalizing the same parking, for instance. Next slide. So, this gives a presence of what that space might be and thinking of the addition being the backdrop to that civic presence space entering the facility from either Myrtle or from that civic space. Next slide. This gives a view from Myrtle. If you're, this is actually driving south, you can see that facility. A lot of glass on the north side, trying to take advantage of that. Next slide. And see, and that's one of the chambers is that kind of special, doing something unique and special with the chambers. Make sure that we're highlighting that. So, in this, this one, you know, one, you can see the existing building. You know, what they placed at the heart of the existing building is all your utilities, all of that stuff. And the building is very deep, so you don't get as much light into the offices in the center of the building. So, I kind of put that back as like, what's the heart of your facility? So, we tried to create a public space in each one of these, but in this one, in the addition, you come into a space and then we try to revolve all the entries to the different departments off of that space. So, that's that, that public interface. On the first floor, we have a couple new spaces with those training spaces. So, you think of that as a space that you might, those might also be used as workshop room for you all. It can also be a public space. So, again, thinking of public opportunities that the public can come and use these spaces for other activities. And then you can close that lobby off to the rest of the building, so you could actually do that independent and lock down, keep security in mind. But you have economic development, customer service, all related on that first floor. And then you have a stair that goes up to the chambers on the second floor. So, that chair gives you that sense of arrival to the chambers on the second level, and you have a secure exit and egress from the chambers for the actual, actual staff. So, you keep that separate from the public. But in this view, you can see how you can see all the different departments on each floor. Moving up, you see how the chambers, how you have that connection to council here directly. And then you have city manager, attorney altogether. And then you have engineering and planning altogether, all within this, this level. We have small reception areas off of the public space for each one of these. You can see how the meeting rooms are grouped along the public spaces. Third floor, we have the human resources, finance, IT, public communication, all within this level. It's not as much public interface, so that's some of the feedback we have with staff of how often the public is coming to those spaces and where we can place them within the building. Okay, next slide. And you see the comparison with all these, showing all the three floors, working through that efficiency, keeping the public is really gravitating around that lobby. And then you have a lot of the staff is gravitating around the existing core of the building. In this scheme, we are filling in some of the lobby, so we're taking advantage of some of that covered space that you have for the entry in the lobby. Even the second floor of that, we're filling in floor. So, we're trying to get as much efficiency out of that plan as possible. And this would be a view from Myrtle. Okay? So, you know, initial estimating of this, you know, thinking of bringing, we are renovating the floors. We're making those right-sized for the different departments and having that connect with the new addition, so it's all very seamless. Mentioned filling in some of those floors, bringing all of those costs in, thinking of contingency and making sure we're thinking about escalation in the process. We really want to, we want to go through this process once and really get to the right size of this project. So, we have all-in the 43,199,000. Okay? So, Option 2, we...
Can I ask a question first? So, in my meetings with the city manager, how much money was already budgeted for renovations of MSB? And is this, I mean, because this is not a real number just to build a new building, correct?
Correct. So, we discussed this, this morning, and the projects that we have allocated for MSB would not cover what is mentioned in this.
Okay, so would any of it, or is it a complete?
So, what we have, and Jay Ravens is here, can correct me if I'm wrong, is like 2, 2 and 1/2 million.
Okay.
But that was more for moving cubicles and internal things. You could certainly reallocate that money, but that's, that's what we have allocated for MSB right now.
Okay. And, I mean, a larger renovation would probably be necessary at some point in the near future anyway, wouldn't it?
I mean, I guess it depends on what we're trying to achieve. I mean, there are things that have to be done, absolutely. So, we're working on the chillers, the roof, you know, things like that would need to be done, yes.
And my other question is, does this include any hardening to make it withstand more than a category 2 or 3?
More than 2 or 3 would come, it does not include any additional hardening for that. The, there is another line item that they have for some windows and envelope improvements. The roof improvement would, would help towards that, so that whole equation could be improved.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so moving into Option 2 is the standalone city hall concept, which you can see, you have a footprint for the city hall that's placed on Myrtle, which provides a buffer, if you will, to that town square, which is on the Penous Trail. So, we have a civic, civic presence from, you know, both the east and west side of this building, trying to make sure that we, we are thinking about, this building really has no, no back door. We have to see it from every angle. This gives you an idea of that presence. There's a, obviously, a programming exercise even with that public space. I think we should go through on this particular option to see how, you know, what type of right-sized activities would happen in this space. You know, there's certainly, you know, markets and localtopia-type, type options for these type of spaces along with the general gathering space for the park, for the building. This shows you how that entry might look from that space. And, you know, in each one of these, again, these are concepts, they're giving you, try to scale size of these. But each does represent some of the values that we found in your strategic plan about sustainability, about innovation, you know, forward-thinking that it is of the essence of its time. We pulled, you know, some of your logo representing the climate and your coastal connection and, you know, thought of bringing that into the building. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that this building is one of a kind. It's representative of the city of Clearwater and your values and the iconic potential of this, this city. See how that plays out in the facade, that it, trying to evoke that, that natural, you know, standpoint that's, that's mentioned in your logo. See how that might look from Myrtle, captures that drive-by view. And then also shows the entry. Go through the planning. On this one, the departments that have moved into this are the HR, public communications. And again, we have that training on the first level, so that's cohesive in all the schemes. The reception, this shows you what that lobby reception might look like. That volume to the upper right is your chambers. So, in each one, we have the chambers are really highlighted as something special that's being held up. I always think that is interesting to, like, what metaphorically is holding it up? Is that, that training in the public space is what's actually, you know, embracing the civic presence? So, there is something embodied in all of these designs. As we move up to that second level, you have the chambers themselves. You have a connection to the council and city manager that could be secured to the chambers, and then from the public, enter from the opposite side. And you also have the clerk and attorney. Have the potential for a third floor in this space. Right now, we have a placeholder for open event space or green space on the roof. And you have that fourth floor plan. View, this is looking to the east from that park space. And then this, this cost is, is slightly more and slightly larger than the Scheme 1 because we're duplicating some services. So, you have duplicate stairs, elevators, duplicate, you know, lobbies. What you also have to think about is duplicate programming. So, you have two security guards, you have, you know, two sets of facility maintenance operations. You have some of those duplications that you have in two buildings, so something to think about. We've tried to embody that in the cost here. One differentiation is that we did not add money into the exterior of the MSB in this option. So, standalone building is not directly attached to it, so the existing building is the existing building in this scheme.
And then for the existing building, this diagram kind of shows two of the departments that are moving out of the MSB, the HR and the part of the public communications. When, so when we take those programs out of the MSB, it creates about a 5,600 square foot space that could be reutilized. But with the departments that are moving in, we need about 9,100 to, of space needed in the MSB. So, part of, part of the exercise that we had was to right-size all of the departments. And when the MSB is renovated, interior is renovated, we can more than accommodate the 9,100. But this is showing that without renovation, those, the two spaces that are vacated don't make up for the spaces that need to come into this.
So, this is trying to answer that question, like, why would we renovate the MSB if we're building the new building? Can we just leave it as is? You know, so this, this starts to point to the departments aren't right-sized if you don't do some, some significant renovations to your existing building in this potential option. Okay? Okay, the third option takes, you know, answers that question, you know, similar to Option 1. If we put all of this group together, so we have all of the staff. I pulled from your strategic plan the, the idea that the education and collaboration between staff was important value, so I think 1 and 3 do answer that, that comment. So, in this scheme, you see, we also have a park space that's along with this. You have a couple different opportunities with the park space. The upper right-hand corner may be a space that could be, you know, programmed significantly, and then you could have a little more of the civic space along the Penous Trail. There's some, some great spaces that are this size that have some other activities, even, you know, movies and, you know, movies at the community city hall type thing. Yeah, are, are this size space, just to give you an idea of what this could handle. This is looking from the Penous Trail into the, into the building. Gives you an idea of the connection and the MSB on the left-hand side. This building is, you know, has some freedom within the site. You know, we want to make sure that it's embracing, so you can see it even kind of opens its arms to the community, inviting them to participate, be a part of civic action in the space. Also, you know, want to, you make sure that we think about this option as sustainably as possible. So, if we think about your existing MSB building, you have that core and you have a deep space between the perimeter and a lot of those offices. And then in a new facility, what we tried to do is get all of the facilities with a reasonable distance to an exterior wall. So, you, so all of your offices now have, have windows, have views, have glass. So, when you think about that longevity of employees and health and how you want to come to work, that this is trying to embrace all of those concepts. See the entry of that? You'll see in the following slides, we give you a scale, kind of looking at the flags for this. But this gives that view, the chambers on the left-hand side. So, those have the separate, kind of strong presence on the, on the park. You have a lot of staff on the, the right, and you have the community enters in the center. So, again, the community is at the center of this, this thought. On the Myrtle side, you have the facades, we're also looking for presence there. And we have the community drop-off to the south, so you have its own potential drive and connection there that we're, we're not leaving that out of the equation. You see, it's here, when you come into the, the building, you, you have the lobby and circulation is at the heart, and all of the entries to the departments are off of that lobby. So, very, this is a very efficient plan for a new building, that you keep all that circulation. There's no hallways. You know, really, you, you get to right where you want to go, make sure that we can see all of those departments. First level, we have a lot of those public functions, customer service. Again, we have the training room, CRA, academic development. You know, you think about bouncing, if I come into a facility, I'm doing development, I may, you know, bounce to CRA, academic development, and then I may bounce up to the planning and engineering. And you can stay within the building, kind of directed within the building. Slide. So, we move up on that second level. Again, you have stairs bring you up to that second level. You have that grand stair idea. You have the chambers, council, city manager, all connected, can access the chamber from a protected entry. And then on the opposite side, you have innovation, clerk, and attorney. Then we move up through the building. You have this, this is how you come up to the chamber level. So, this is that stair and being able to just always be in this. The public never really exits this except to go into the chambers or into a conference room. So, and even from different departments, if all of your conference rooms are, are there, not everybody has to, we can actually reduce the number of conference rooms because you could use any of those conference rooms. So, it's very efficient in how we think about this. Then promote that collaboration. Move up, we have engineering and planning sharing a floor. And then we have IT and finance sharing a floor, and that's upper level. And finally, HR and parks and rec. See how that lays out within the different levels, you know, consolidated. See the potential for that entry. And with this, yeah, I think the, the team and, you know, between staff and the departments have continued to create efficiencies between the plans. So, you see how the, like, initial, you know, if, before we actually laid it out, we were at 90 million, and we continued to build efficiency. Okay, how can we make this more efficient? So, bringing that into approximately 76 million with everything included. And in this, in this one, the existing MSB is a standalone, so no renovation on that, no duplication of operations. That, this allows that essentially to go back on the tax rolls if you so choose. And, you know, we did get some preliminary, you know, real estate estimates that were, you know, actually fairly high because of the cost as a building, not as a land, actually. As a building seemed to have the most value because 66,000 square feet. Even if you put a $200 a square foot, you can't replace a building for that anymore. So, there's some significant value in there to consider. But what it did start to make us think about was the phasing of this. So, when we look at comparing these, a big part of this is how do we accomplish it with the staff and interruption and, and health during the project? So, in 1 and 2, it's coming, you know, very apparent that we either have to move staff around significantly. So, we have to either piecemeal, do, do a bit of a floor, do a bit of a floor, work in a construction zone for a couple of years, or we have to, you know, move everybody out, temporary facilities or, you know, office lease, and then move them back in, so you have two moves. That's, that would occur in both Option 1 and 2 because even 2, having a standalone building, we can't move everybody into that and then move them back out. There's just not enough physical space for it. So, something to think about in how we accomplish both those. Obviously, in Option 3, you build that, you leave that alone, and then you move up one time into, into Option 3 with that, with that scheme. So, that was very much on the, you know, value assessment of the pros and cons. The other, just to give you information, the schedule, we think 1 and 2 would be approximately 22 months. Some of that's depending on the phasing, the final phasing of whether we wanted to stay in place and what options we have for moving staff in and out. The third option, we, we would like to hold a 30-month window for that, but then you're not interrupting, you know, operations while that's occurring. You can really, you know, keep that secure within that space. You know, some... You know, some other, you know, pros and cons just to think about is, I think each one of those, the public space we're, we're maintaining, we're thinking about, you know, what is the outdoor space of that? What is the indoor space of that? How do they work together on each scheme? How's accessible it is to the public? We have had city halls that, I mean, the chambers themselves are rented out for weddings and events. And, and I think, thinking of it a little bit differently than a traditional city hall. I mean, what has changed since traditional city halls? City halls and, and courts were initially meant to show strength and keep people out, right? And so what we're trying to do now is really establish, you know, how do we invite the public in? You know, and a lot of the carrots for getting people in are some of these other more public activities. The train, the training room, the, you know, some of the economic development, you know, CRA. So people may come in for different reasons and hopefully that, you know, we make it more positive and add some new community events for that. And then they're more active to get involved with civic engagement along the, along the way. Missing out on any pros and cons? Well, with that, I think I'll, you know, pause. I think we've thrown a lot of information at you. We, like I said, we have a, a long way to go with the process and, and options and how we continue to drive this. But hopefully this gives you an overview to, to ask questions.
So a quick question, the numbers we have are a little different than the numbers on the screen. Is that, is one of them dated?
We had a, we had a couple of slight updates with that. And I think, you know, one was we got some updates on utility relocation in option three. That's what we made sure that we added that in there. We just wanted to make sure that you had the most up-to-date numbers that we had.
So our numbers are accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, those are not.
Which ones are accurate?
This one, this year is higher, so that one's accurate.
That one's accurate, okay. I mean, it's not a lot, it's four hundred dollars on two of them, maybe eight hundred dollars on the other one or something like that. Okay. Or not a hundred, thousand. Okay, any questions or comments right now? Yes, sir.
So I guess when I reviewed each one of these, there's a, a difference in the size of the chamber. One and two, I think you had twenty-five hundred square feet. Option three, you had twenty-four hundred square feet. I'm looking at this room as about a little over twenty-five hundred square feet. So my question would be, is that, is that a big enough chamber? I mean, I, I think back of the old chamber at city hall that was built in sixty-four that was about, it seemed like it maybe was a little narrower than this, but it was a little longer. And, I mean, we had a lot less people in sixty-four than we do now. And, you know, did you take any future expansion and that in consideration?
That, that's a great question. And there are small adjustments on, on the kind of square footages through all three schemes because now we're trying to fit it into a particular box. But so a couple of things that were, you would have at your usage in this new facility is that training room is also overflow room. You know, so, and the lobby, the lobby of that would be, you know, considered as, you know, some waiting and, and overflow as well. So thinking about that, everybody isn't necessarily coming in on their, like, if you had a big activity, you'd be able to simulcast into the training room and have an additional, you know, group of people within that room. Or if they're, you know, see their topic, they're able to, you know, transcend. Because it's usually on that, more of that big topic that you have that kick in, right? So making sure that we accommodate that, but not necessarily force you to pay for that all the time when you're not going to use it. We could certainly add to that square footage, but that was the, the mentality of providing you access to those other spillover spaces.
Well, that makes sense. I mean, I can understand that. We get complaints all the time about building road rates to, roadways to the absolute capacity and we don't do that either, so.
Right. That's exactly it.
But I imagine, you know, I've, as long as I've been up there, I've seen two or three times where we filled completely up and it's nice to have an overflow room where people can go and still see what's going on.
Right.
How, how large is this room? Anybody know?
This is about twenty-five, I just did a count, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet. I came up with about forty-two by sixty in here.
Okay, just curious. Okay, anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Help me understand why for option two, we can't all, all the staff can't remain where they're at until option two would be built. Why can't MSB staff stay where they are, we stay where we are, and then we just move in at one shot? Help me understand why that's not possible.
Well, some of the, so the, the, the staff, like you all, would be able to do that exactly, right? So the city manager, you know, council would be able to stay where they're at and then move over into the, the new building. It's, it's more of the, the staff in the existing MSB, MSB that would need to, to move around to accommodate renovation. You know, so a couple of different departments there.
Yeah, and so that slide where it's showing the departments that move out, that's, that's if everything else in the MSB stayed exactly the way it was. You would only, you'd have, like, you could fit maybe innovation into where HR was and CRA into where public communications was. Those aren't the best spots for them, but it's just plugging in pieces that fit. And you're left with economic, economic development that doesn't fit in the existing building at all.
So, so any department that goes into the new building would only move once, right? So it is better from a moving around standpoint than option one, you know, because some departments only need to move once. But you're still going to have to renovate the existing building, you know. So at some point, you're going to have disruption for that existing building, just physically to do that renovation. So that's where the disruption happens.
So we're showing, like, we're, we're showing you some space gets taken out of, IT, I think, gets a little smaller. Finance gets a little smaller. So you're starting to take, you're starting to right-size all the departments that have extra space in order to make more room for, you know, all three of those departments that need to come in.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
So on option two, we've got a thirty-five hundred square feet deficit. We're not going to be able to fit everybody back into the building?
You will be with renovation. That's, that's what we're saying, is the renovation allows you to fit everything in there. And have, and, and also, we did a lot of process with staff on the adjacency and how people work together. So it also allows you to accommodate that internal collaboration, you know, within them. So, I mean, obviously you have two different buildings, so collaboration with staff that's in the separate building is going to be different than that. But within the building, we wanted to get the adjacencies and right-sizing as much as possible. And we, we did right-size to what they're using right now and, you know, what they did see on the horizon, make sure that we're accommodating, you know, some future planning with that.
So you said that you did some preliminary real estate estimates as a building, the MSB, what it might be worth. What, what preliminary number did you come up with?
Well, I'd just say a, a range of ten to thirteen was a, a number that, you know, some of the office, you know, market had mentioned. There's a lot of people that are looking to have office, an office building and be owner-occupied, you know, from an investment standpoint. And that product is not on the market. So that particular range starts to be pretty conducive for owner-occupation, not just as spec office, for instance. So even if you used two hundred dollars a square foot, if you're building office anywhere, that won't pay for construction, no less than land. You know, so if you just apply sixty-six thousand square feet to, to that minimum number, you have thirteen thousand, thirteen million. So that's, you know, we, we did reach out to a couple, you know, office developers in, in that market. I think there, that was some of their, you know, first, you know, response to that. And I, I think that, that all comes into also somebody, you know, land banking a property for, you know, future as the, the city continues, continues to develop.
Okay. And then how much do we have set aside in our, have earmarked for the new city hall right now? What's the dollar amount that's sitting there?
It's thirty million.
Thirty million? Okay.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Like, I just wanted to run by, review the numbers again, make sure that, that they're right. Because, you know, when this first came up, we had one-on-ones with the city manager. And the question that was asked to us, how would you like to have this? Everybody combined into one building or separate like we have now? And I think everybody pretty much said, well, we'd like to maybe see everybody in one building. And then, you know, when we started talking about it, it came back at ninety million dollars, which really surprised us. But, so now everybody thought that we were talking about spending ninety million dollars and that wasn't the case. So I just want to make sure the numbers are clear right now, since we're, we're not talking ninety million dollars. But the way that I have it figured, looking at what I had, maybe not what you have on your screen. Option number one, the existing MSB is sixty-six thousand square feet. And the add-on would be thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven square feet, which would give us a hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty square feet. And the price was forty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, basically. Make it, make it forty-three million. The option number two, we got the same thing for the MSB. The new building on the lot would be forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine square feet. So it's a little bit bigger. And that price tag for remodeling the MSB and the new building comes in at seventy-six million dollars.
Oh, that would be, it's gonna be a three. And, and just one revision on option one was the exact total is forty-three million, one ninety-nine. Two ninety-five.
Okay, so the numbers that we've had, okay, well.
Yeah, slight, slight update, sorry for.
Okay, so option number two, with remodeling the MSB and adding a new building on, would be how much?
Forty-four million, eight hundred and seventy-seven, two hundred and sixty-five.
Okay, and then option three, which doesn't have anything to do really with the MSB, that's a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three square feet. And what did that number come in at?
Seventy-six million, two forty-eight.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
So just to be clear in terms of what next steps are from a staff perspective, is we would be looking for council on Thursday night to provide direction in terms of which of these three options they would like us to consider. So I just want to make sure that that was clear to everybody in terms of what the next steps would be and when. And make sure that council has everything that they need from staff. We're all here to answer any questions in order to aid in that decision for Thursday night.
Thank you. So one question I have, if somehow we had an appetite for the big building and we sold MSB, that we'd need additional parking then. Because if we sold MSB to somebody, they'd want that parking, wouldn't they?
I, I do think there's a proportion between the parking that's on there, public parking, and being able to, you know, provide for that. There was a delta in the, in the parking, but agreed, there is some parking spaces that would need to be accounted for in the vicinity.
All right, any other comments right now?
No, I'm actually glad that we did get a value to the MSB building, which is basically how much it's going to cost to renovate. So with thirteen million, even if we, let's say, sell it, we're still, we're still accountable for sixty-three if we go for option C, or three. So I'm, I'm happy we got that figure.
Yeah, obviously, we didn't count any, like, future tax revenue for putting that on the, the tax rolls, those type of things. But our operational cost of two versus one, but you, at least hopefully you get a picture of the avenues.
All right, we're done with this one. Okay, let's take a quick recess.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the June 12 Florida City Council Work Session, and Councilmember Tashir wants to continue speaking for a minute about the previous subject.
Yeah, I am interested in hearing my fellow colleagues, where you're at in your opinion, so we're not side-blinded on Thursday. We have some days to ponder, and I'm quite interested in hearing what your thoughts are. I can begin if you want, or someone else can.
Please do.
So with everything considered, I kind of narrowed it down to option one and two. However, with option one, aesthetically, and I'm sure that it's not all, you know, solid, but when I look at option number one, it kind of reminds me of a mid-century contemporary look, which is reminiscent of the old city hall, that top-heavy look. And it just looks like we, you know, modernized the color palette outside. And so it kind of falls short for me. If we're going to do something, I think it needs to represent our city, which is a progressive and modern city. So then I'm kind of, I am leaning towards option two. There's a lot of things that I like about it. I like the sleek, clean lines. It does blend in well with our logo. Centralized chamber, I like that as well. The campus feel. And I like actually the smaller size of the city council offices. We're not there long enough or often enough to ask for more than 1,800 square feet. So of all the options, in my mind, option two is the one that's a leader for me at this point.
I would agree with that.
I certainly agree. There's a wow factor to two, and I like the big grassy area there. I do kind of like the fact that we're all together in one, but it does not look as impressive. But I think having everybody under one roof was something that appealed to me at some point, and I think appealed to all of us. So I'm with you. I'm stuck on one and two. And two does impress me.
When I first looked at the conceptual drawings, I was really leaning to one until I saw what the conceptual outside looked like. To me, I kind of agree with your comments on it. It just looked like something that was designed in the '70s. But now that I'm looking at the, kind of comparing all three of them, I like option And I think we do need to put some money aside to redo the MSB. So that, to me, is, I think is a better option, for me at least, than the other two.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckman?
I would agree. Number two is, I mean, ideally, I think number three is best, but I think number two gets the job done.
Thank you. Anything else on that right now? All right, let's move on to 2.2, please.
Approve change order one from Biltmore Construction. I know.
We're not that scary, are we?
Good afternoon. I'm Joe DeCicco with Public Works Engineering. Demolition activities for the project began in December. During the external demolition, asbestos was found in a vapor barrier mastic that had been applied to a hidden wall that was not previously identified. This material was applied to the concrete block wall outer surface and was concealed underneath a concrete cladding panels. The mastic was unearthed to the contractor and asbestos consultant prior to being exposed during this demolition. Once discovered, the asbestos consultant collected and tested samples of the material, and it was found to have asbestos. And it will be, need to be handled and properly disposed of. We were also requested to remove 30, about 32 four- to seven-foot-deep piles that support the building columns. So this change order includes asbestos removal and disposal, as well as the related monitoring reporting, and the excavation and disposal of the foundation piles.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this item? Consent? Thank you. 2.3, please.
Approve a work order to STAN-TAC for the former Elks Lodge demolition.
The former Elks Lodge is a two-story, concrete-block-and-wood frame building. It was built in 1955 and was in use until about 2020. It is currently unoccupied. A building condition assessment completed by the city in 2020 found structural issues that were extensive with the building. Due to anticipated costs to repair or renovate, it was determined that the building should be demolished and the site redeveloped. Asbestos surveys completed in 2021 and 2022 found significant amounts of asbestos in the building. This project will include the asbestos removal and disposal, the building demolition, site grading, and sodding to finish.
Any questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
So this will only take 60 days to demolish it and then get sod up? So it should look really nice?
Yeah.
60 days?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Great.
Anything else? Okay, consent?
Yes.
Thank you. 2.4, please.
Approve change order two to Skanska for the Imagine Clear Water Flatwork and Vertical Construction.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilman Mayor. Tim Kurtz, I'm construction manager for engineering and public works. Change order before you, just to be clear, will utilize unused portions of GMP 1 and 2. So basically, this is no addition to the contract. We'll basically take what was not used in GMP 1 and 2, total it together, so that we can include additional items, so that we can meet our deadline, basically. So I'm here, I've got Katsa Metsinis, I knew I'd mess it up, within a vision, our owners rep, and also have Ken Duty here. If y'all have any specific questions, we can answer.
Any questions or comments on this item? No? Okay, consent?
If you permit me for a second, though.
Yes.
I think you should all be very proud of this project. We finished it on time, we finished it on budget, and it's going to be all over the news, it'll be published. It's just an incredible addition to the city of Clearwater. So all of you that had the vision to get it done, I commend you.
It's remarkable.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Finance, please, 3.1.
Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2022.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is a presentation of the city's fiscal 2022 annual comprehensive financial report by the city's external auditors, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. However, before the presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the accounting professionals across departments citywide that assisted with completion of the financial report, led by Monica Mitchell, Assistant Finance Director, as well as the assistance and guidance of Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. It is a significant effort by many, and we sincerely appreciate everyone's contribution. I'd now like to introduce John Breelmeier with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, who will present the report to you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I think Jay undercut that a little bit. It's about a 200-page product that we're done. We audit it front to back. Various levels of assurance go into it, but a lot of departments go into it in a lot of time from various areas. So we appreciate Jay's cooperation as well as Monica's. Very similar reports to the CRA. A couple of findings we'll go over, overall very minor. The independent auditors report, this changed this year. The opinion got moved to the very first paragraph. You've read them before. The opinion was at the very end. You had to read the entire report till you figured out if it was a clean report or not. This year, it's at the very beginning. They also clearly describe what's management's responsibilities, which is the fair presentation of the financial statements, and our responsibilities to audit those statements and make sure that they're materially correct. Again, we issued an unmodified opinion on those. The government auditing standards report, we did have one finding. It was in relation to the claims, the valuation of claims liability at the end of the year. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. The city also goes through what's called a single audit. You receive federal and state funds. Those audits get prepared separately and issued a report on. The major programs for that was the coronavirus relief funds, and then the state housing initiative program. Those issued clean opinions. We didn't have any findings, any question costs, anything like that. Again, you'll see this, one comment come up a couple of times. The management letter is prescribed by the Auditor General of the state of Florida. We did have finding 22-1. There was a significant deficiency over financial reporting related to the carrying value of liabilities for estimated unpaid claims in the financial statements. CRA, we did identify a control deficiency related to the understatement of tax revenue. The understatement of tax revenue, you get communication service tax, that gets paid 90 days, 60, 90 days out from when it's actually collected. The city does a great job of recording those on a monthly basis. It just happened this year. They only recorded 11 months of it instead of 12 months. The number's on the next slide, so. The local government investment policy, this is Florida statute 218, 415. You have an investment pool, you take all of your money, you put it into a pool, and you invest it accordingly. And that is in line with Florida statute. We didn't have any significant findings over that. Again, with the claims, so the claims payable, it's a decrease of $741,000. That's related to discounting the current value of those claims. It was a significant deficiency based on the dollar value. In the grand scheme of the financial statements, it did not materially mistake those financial statements, and that amount was adjusted. The increase for communication sales tax, or service tax, was 366,000. So that was that 12th month of revenue that the city recorded. And then we implemented GAAS-B87. Sure, everybody read the statements and noticed that there was a couple of extra lines on the balance sheet and income statements. We now have a right-to-use asset, which is when you're leasing an asset. Couple of facilities that the city leases, those now become right-to-use assets, and you have a right-to-use liability for the future lease payments. Then you also have a lease receivable for where the city is the lessor in this situation. A lot of that has to do with the marina and the various properties that the city's owned, leased to restaurants, the marina, the boat slips, things like that. So those numbers can be pretty large, but it's just the future payments all put together and discounted back. Big change. Numbers, a little bit hard to digest. They had over 100 leases in there to go through and analyze and then put together and create those. It's a lot of time for your accounting staff. The last little bit is our communications. We had no significant changes to the accounting policies, other than GAAS-B87, which is leases. Accounting estimates are used in your financial statements. That includes the allowance for doubtful accounts, the fair value of investments, risk management accruals, pension, OPEB, and the estimated useful life of capital assets. We did not run into any significant difficulties during our audit. We did not have any disagreements with management. We actually worked closely with management to implement GAAS-B87. Again, they're wonderful people to work with. You're very lucky to have them. Other findings at issue, we don't have anything to note. There was no uncorrected misstatements. Everything that we found was corrected, those two minor things. And then issues discussed prior to retention, we're not aware of any. And internal controls deficiencies, other than previously noted, we're not aware of any. Questions, Brad?
Any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's only a work session. Okay, I'm sorry. Let's go to Office of Management and Budget, 4.1, please.
I'm on the city's fiscal year 2022, 2023, operating and capital improvement budgets.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kalen Castle, Budget Director. This is the mid-year budget review for the fiscal year 22, 23 budget. This report reflects six months of activity, October through March, and also includes council action to date. And the general fund revenues and expenditures are increased by $779,120 for the council-approved appropriation of general fund reserves of $610,620 to fund grant opening events at Coachman Park, and $168,500 to fund the sound acoustic study. Other general fund amendments include transfers between departments, which net to zero, to reallocate funding. Adjusted for all items in this report, general fund reserves are approximately 57.2 million, or 31.1% of the current year's general fund budget. This exceeds our minimum reserve requirement by $41.6 million at mid-year. In the solid waste and recycling fund, expenditures reflect the council-approved increase of $400,000 to provide increased single-stream recycling costs. In the airpark fund, expenditures are increased by $367,000. This represents agreements with the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, to fund the purchase of a golf cart and to provide project funding for paving at the airpark. Airpark revenues are amended to allocate reserves for the required cash match. In the capital improvement fund, a net increase of $1,087,961 is reflected at mid-year. The following amendments represent increases to capital funds for actions previously approved by the council. This includes increases of $140,000 in insurance reimbursement revenues in the garage off-cycle replacement project, an increase of $1,700, I'm sorry, $1,750,000 in grant revenues from FDOT and airpark revenues in the apron relayment project, and an increase of $300,000 in grant revenues from FDOT and reimbursement revenues in the aviation operations center project. Other significant amendments to capital projects in this report include a decrease of lease purchase revenue of $25,354 in the underground refuse project, a decrease of $1,135,548 of grant revenue from the Southwest Florida Water Management District in the groundwater replenishment project, and an increase of $22,031 of insurance reimbursements in the traffic safety infrastructure project. In the special program fund, an increase of $2,570,355 is reflected at mid-year. Significant amendments include $610,620 in general fund revenues for grant, for opening events at Coachman Park, and $168,500 in general fund revenues for the sound acoustic study, $99,419 in public safety revenues for federal forfeiture sharing and agency assistance, $343,167 in contractual service revenue for police extra duty, $1,185,780 in donation revenues to support police and library programs, $3,400 in foreclosure registry fees collected, $85,098 in fines and court proceeds for the public safety programs and the tree replacement program, $33,993 in special events revenues, and $35,879 transferred between existing police programs. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Parks and Recreation.
Authorize a guaranteed maximum price proposal to service builders for the construction of a new pier and dock at Cliff Stevens Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. The gross maximum price for you is for a new recreational pier at Cliff Stevens Park. It's got 82 linear feet of concrete sidewalk that will go out to, the overall length, 60-foot recreational pier. It's ADA compliant, which the previous one that was demolition was not. We're using composite lumber, which will help extend the overall length of the dock, and is also recyclable at the time. It does need to be replaced. We've also elevated the pier higher above the waterline, so that when it floods, we don't get debris and other issues with this pier like we used to have with the one that was previously demolished. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
So this is fantastic. It says it's a four-month project to replace that dock. Do you think it'll be finished by the end of the calendar year?
If we can get started, which we anticipate, once this is approved, POsCo, our service can sign with its subcontractors and get going, I do believe we can get it done.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? Consent on this one?
Yes.
Thank you. Planning, please.
Provide direction on Clearwater 2NT45, Parks and Public Places, Conservation Coastal Management, and Subdivision of its chapters.
Good afternoon, Jamie Locko, Planning and Development. We're here today to look at the last three chapters of our new comprehensive plan, similar to your June 5 presentation. I'll present the goals, objectives, and policies for each of the chapters, and we'll stop after each one to give you an opportunity for questions. And I'd like staff to help me out, answer some of those questions from other departments. We'll get started with Parks and Public Places. This is going to provide guidance for our Parks and Recreation throughout the city. The goals, objectives, and policies from this chapter came from our existing recreation and open space element, and we really brought that chapter over basically as is with some few updates and to bring in some new information covering equity. We did that because right now we're working with a consultant to rewrite our Parks and Recreation master plan, and as part of that, they'll be looking at updates to the comprehensive plan. So we do anticipate, once that master plan has been adopted, we will come back to you with amendments to this chapter. So goal number one is our new goal to strive to meet the needs of all users of our open spaces, trails, and parks and recreation facilities. We have one objective under this goal, and that's the city should consider equity of all users when we're designing, developing, and redeveloping open spaces, trails, and parks and recreation facilities. We have five objectives. Some of those are making sure we have equal opportunities for all park users, and then also expanding the use of our beach-friendly wheelchairs and the use of our beach-accessible mats at our public beaches.
Oh, no, well, the next slide, sorry.
Yeah, that's a short one.
Yeah, it is. All good on that one.
Okay. All right. Goal number two is the preservation of natural features and locating parks and open spaces in appropriate areas of the city. And we have six objectives to support goal number two, and the first one is making sure the city has an adequate supply of open spaces, trails, and parks and recreation facilities. The one policy under that objective is to maintain our level of service of four acres of parkland for every 1,000 persons citywide. 2.2 is continuing to increase the amount of parkland in areas where additional needs for parks and recreation facilities. We have six policies under there, includes continuing to acquire additional parkland, continuing to locate our new neighborhood parks near schools, local and collector roads and transit routes, and continue to locate our new community parks adjacent to arterial or transit routes. 2.3 is preserving natural open space areas that are aesthetic or ecological community assets. Five policies under this objective, and some of those are continuing to administer our landscape drainage and impervious service regulations from our code, preserving land that's currently designated as preservation or recreation open space, and then providing open spaces for nature study and the enjoyment of natural, of natural assets. 2.4 is enhancing and maintaining the city's unique physical characteristics. We have four policies under this objective, including some to continue to maintain the integrity of our city's park system and continuing to enhance open spaces by restoring degraded natural areas and eradicating non-native vegetation. 2.5 is developing, enhancing blueways, greenways, and trails. We have two policies under this, and that's continuing to develop greenways and trails identified in the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and providing new access or enhancing existing access to blueways. And lastly, 2.6 is our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Utilize that to guide park development. And the three policies under that are updating our master plan impact fee ordinance by the end of 2023, and updating the plan to incorporate the findings of the new master plan. Any questions on that?
On one of your slides, it says, and I quote, "Currently, the city retains a surplus of vacant land that was purchased for future neighborhood parks." Is there any way where I can find out where those parcels are?
Which one is that one page you're talking about?
Oh, it doesn't say what page.
2.2, it's on page, oh.
It got cut off for me.
Clearwater Comprehensive Plan. It's the second page of the introduction, kind of.
It was a part of the introduction?
Currently, this, yeah.
Yeah, it's under, yeah. So page after introduction, it has the picture of the Pier 60 underneath. It goes into how many parks we have, all the acreage and all that. There's a statement that says that we have a surplus of vacant land that's going to be, that has been purchased for future neighborhood parks. And I was just wondering where they were, if I can have a list of locations and so forth.
There you go.
The purple means that, the purple?
No, that's special facilities.
Yeah, sorry.
So the question is on the surplus land?
Yes, that was already purchased for future parks.
Yes, we have, those were actually purchased years ago, say about 20 years ago. It's when we had our impact fee, impact that we used to purchase land. One of those would have been, but we are starting to develop would be a park like State Street Park, okay? There's a park like Lake Chautauqua. There's a lot of land around that lake itself that's undeveloped. There is land, it'd be best if I give you a whole list of them.
Fine.
There's at St. Croix, the end of St. Croix, there's like a three or four acre park down there that's just vacant property with trees, beautiful. But I can give you a list of any land that we have that is basically surplus to our needs. Anything over four acres per 1,000 would be considered surplus because we're meeting our needs. So I think that was the reason why that was put in there in that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, AR, is that land, so I too had the same question that Councilmember Teshade had, is there a list of these properties? Are all of those properties zoned OSR or not?
You know, I'm not sure. I'd have to check that out.
Okay.
Okay, some of them may not be. The majority are. We try to, when we get a piece of property, to go ahead and rezone it OSR.
Okay.
But I would have to confirm that in the faculty.
Okay, okay. And then, you know, I, when we talk about the acreage, well, this is just kind of a little tedious, but we have, when coupled with core parkland, the city has a total of 1,770.55 acres in total parkland. But I'd like to know how much of that, of our parks, recreation centers, neighborhood parks, all the park, special facilities, all that, how much of that square footage or acres is for paid or reserved use only? So sometimes I get concerned about big facilities or rec areas that are locked and that people who live around there can't access it without reserving it or paying or things like that. So I just, I'd like to have a distinction of, these are all the open ones that residents can use at any time unless it's closed, operational hours, and these are the ones that are more for specialized recreation that has to be contracted or paid for, reserved or unlocked. You know, just a distinction. That's all. And then I had some questions about your slides.
Jenny.
So on that first one, the goal of, goal two, ensure that natural features of the city are preserved, that parkland, trails, open spaces, and parks and recreation facilities are located in appropriate areas of the city. I just wondered about the use of that phrase, appropriate, especially when we look at a whole map of the city, like I have the Parks and Rec map, a great big four-foot one, and there's like, not a lot of trails or green space in the middle of the city. I mean, we have Crest Lake Park, which is wonderful, but, you know, really between, in the North Greenwood community, there isn't a whole bunch in the center of the city. So I wondered about, what does it mean about appropriate areas of the city that we have all those things?
It can be a number of things. I mean, appropriate can be areas that are lacking, but it can also be areas that have land that is already zoned for open space and recreation.
Okay. And so how do we, the question is, you want to increase parkland. How do we plan to increase parkland? Is it to use these parcels that we already have designated out there and actually develop them into parks, or do we want to buy up green space and designate it as parks?
It would be both, but with the limited amount of land that's available, it's essentially more going to be what we have.
Okay. And then what are our goals to preserve and which locations are like a priority to preserve natural spaces? Do we have goals like acreage that we want to maintain as green, and, and then do we prioritize them in some way, or does that come later?
That would probably be part of the Parks and Rec master plan.
Okay. And then enhance physical characteristics for 2.4. What are the enhancements that you think are needed? Do we have an idea of those?
Not specifically. These are just generalized policies for us to look toward.
As we go 20 years in the future? Okay. So it's not, not just replacing equipment and things, but it can be other? Okay. Thanks.
All right. Please continue.
All right. Goal number three is another short one. It's our Parks and Recreation impact fees used to improve the park systems in the city. We have one objective under that, and that is to continue to administer our Parks and Rec impact fee. We have five policies under that, and some of those are fairly recent. That includes spending our funds at any location in the city towards recreation and open spaces, and also providing incentive within the impact fee structure for private developers of affordable housing. Any questions on that one? Short one. All right. Then we'll move into our Conservation and Coastal Management chapter. This is for protecting and preserving our natural resources as well as coastal areas, and also introducing some sustainability and resilient techniques for development and redevelopment. The goals, objectives, and policies from this come from our existing conservation and coastal management elements, as well as a couple from our future land use element. So the first goal deals with protecting and enhancing our natural resources in the city to provide for long-term use of those resources, and we have four objectives to support that goal. First objective is in continuing to protect our dunes, beaches, floodplains, drainage ways, and other natural resources from encroachment and development. Right now, there are 14 policies under this objective, and some of those are to protect and improve our air quality, to continue to restrict density or intensity seaward of our coastal construction line, to restore our dunes and beach areas with native vegetation in lieu of hardened structures, to guide development away from sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas, and to continue controlling, erosion control during our site developments to contain our site runoff and protect water quality. 1.2 is protect and manage our wetlands, our estuaries, our wildlife habitats, and our conservation areas. We want to protect those in a natural state without unnatural disturbances or adverse impacts from developments. So 10 policies under that, and some of those are protecting our marine life and wildlife habitats, especially our threatened and endangered species, through a professional wildlife management or habitat restoration program. Continue to protect mangroves and marine floodways from disturbance and destruction, and protecting our wetlands by directing incompatible uses, land uses away from those wetlands. 1.3 is protecting city-owned and maintained potable water wells from contamination and conserve our current and future water sources. We have four policies under this, and some of those are administering, administering our wellhead protection ordinance, and continuing to expand our reclaimed water services to limit the use of potable water for irrigation. And 1.4 is managing our stormwater discharge for flood protection and preserve and enhance water quality for stormwater runoff into our receiving water bodies. We have 11 policies under this, and some of those are updating our stormwater manual and our code to include low-impact development techniques, incorporating water quality protection enhancement and stormwater management plans, and seeking to meet the goals, guidelines, and regulations to flood protection and pollution abatement in stormwater management plans.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question about your objective 1.2. When we protect, maintain, enhance, and manage wetlands, estuaries, wildlife habitats, all that, does it include, and it goes with Conservation and Coastal Management goal, beach renourishment, because we have protected critters that are on our coast out there, our beach? So would that include beach renourishment actions?
Beach renourishment is not specifically listed in this goal because it's something that we do in conjunction with other entities, so that will be on our planning implementation chapter, because we'll work with Pinellas County and the state to do that.
Okay. But we're lim, we're, we're up against some, we're struggling with that. Right. Okay. And then for stormwater discharge, it, this is where we can do some things like require incentivized stormwater retention by developers or businesses, residents incentivize rain gardens, things like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, goal number two is protecting development and public facility investment from storm events and flood risks related to flooding, high tide events, and sea level rise to reduce property losses. There are seven objectives to support this goal. 2.1 is to ensure development includes strategies to reduce risk and losses due to flooding events, stormwater runoff, and impacts to sea level rise. Two policies under this are ensuring development within floodplains is consistent with city plans and codes, as well as the National Flood Insurance Policy Community Rating System Program, and continuing to bring noncompliant structures into conformance with city codes and FEMA standards. 2.2 is identifying city infrastructure facilities that are susceptible to impacts of flooding and sea level rise, and evaluate projects to assess vulnerabilities to maximize the effective lifespans. Five policies under this objective, some include utilizing vulnerability assessments to determine if infrastructure or public facilities should be built, rebuilt, modified, or relocated, and evaluating incorporation of stabilization or armoring of roadway shoulders or embankments where floodwaters tend to wash roads out. 2.3 is the city should research and implement standards for resilient protection in our code to address flooding, storm events, and sea level rise for any development in flood-prone or coastal areas. Two policies under this are evaluating requiring additional freeboard, elevated finish floor, and wet or dry floodproofing for new development and substantial improvements, or to consider revising the substantial improvement and damage thresholds to reduce the number of noncompliant structures. And 2.4, the city should continue to protect access to our public beaches. We have two policies under this, and that's enhancing access to public beaches through development or recreational lands, land acquisition or easements, and continuing to enforce the Coastal Zone Protection Act by prohibiting vacations of existing and future beach access. 2.5, a city should direct permanent populations and certain uses away from our coastal storm area. There are five policies under this that include prohibiting the location or expansion of hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, or similar uses in our coastal storm area, and continuing to allow or limit densities and intensities in our coastal storm area through beach by design in our US-19 plans. 2.6 is ensuring that adequate hurricane evacuation times are maintained and evaluate ways to reduce our evacuation times. So we have seven policies under that, and some of those are requiring disaster plans for hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, or similar uses, requiring newer, or redeveloped overnight accommodation uses in our coastal storm area to have an approved hurricane evacuation plan, and continuing to utilize hurricane evacuation zones shown on the map on the slide. And lastly, 2.7, we should identify areas vulnerable to flooding and sea level rise and designate them as adaptation action areas. There are four policies under this, include mapping those areas and defining strategies for development and investment in public facilities, infrastructure, and utilities, and evaluating their strategies to ensure the most up-to-date data for vulnerability assessments.
Any questions?
I have a question, like on, on 2.63, require new or redeveloped overnight accommodation uses located within the coastal storm area to have a city-approved hurricane evacuation plan for all guests. So that's only new or redeveloped accommodation, right?
Some existing may have them already in place.
And then when we have required disaster plans for hospitals, nursing homes, all that other stuff, 2.6, 2.6.2 and 2.6.3, when we require, what means of enforcement do we have for that? You know, if they don't have a hurricane evacuation plan, what, they don't get a certificate of occupancy, or? I don't know if we would hold that up for that, Gina?
That would be part of the construction process. I think the issue is getting them retroactively for existing facilities. That's a lot more difficult, and, you know, I'm sure our emergency management chief is not here, so I would really defer to him on existing ones.
But is that something we're going to look at, you know, with, with the plan? Because, right, we have all the existing ones that might not have evacuation plans.
Right, and we'll need to talk with him. I mean, we do require that for projects that get density out on Clearwater Beach, and through the development agreement process, we get the evacuation plans. That's the best mechanism that we have for them, but retroactively. That's more, I think, more of a collaboration and cooperation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Goal number three is ensuring post-disaster redevelopment occurs in a manner that minimizes public and private vulnerability to future disasters. And we have two objectives under this goal. 3.1 is ensuring post-disaster redevelopment follows all pickable codes and considers relocation to limit future damage and repetitive losses. And we have five policies under this objective, including establishing criteria to limit future development in areas that experience repeated damage or properties that suffer repetitive losses, and continuing to review FEMA repetitive loss properties and considering acquiring such properties to limit future losses. 3.2 is limiting public expenditures to only those necessary to serve populations and study the relocation and development of new infrastructure outside of flood-prone areas. We have two policies under this objective, and that's continuing to manage, repair, and rebuild damaged, critical infrastructure and facilities necessary to serve populations and minimize storm and flooding images, but then also evaluate the relocation of non-critical infrastructure and facilities outside of flood-prone areas.
Any questions?
All right. Number four is integration of sustainable and resilient techniques into land use, transportation, housing, and infrastructure planning, decision-making, and development. We have three objectives to support goal number four. 4.1 is evaluate and amend the code to encourage the use of sustainable and resilient uses. We have five policies under that, including considering allowing community gardens to locate in all zoning districts, evaluating amendments to the code to allow urban agriculture or food production activities, and considering a pilot program for commercial composting. 4.2 is promoting the use of sustainable and resilient building techniques and renewable energy sources in development, renovation, and rehabilitation. There are eight policies under this objective, and some of those include establishing green building standards, transitioning city-owned operations to 100% renewable, zero-emission, clean-energy electricity by 2040, amending the code to permit installation and use of renewable technologies such as solar or scaled wind turbines, and researching and incorporating biophilic planning into our CDC to improve the air quality and reduce urban heat effects. And that is the inclusion of natural objects or shapes in the development. And lastly, 4.3 is implement and evaluate the Clearwater Green Print 2.0 to increase the city's resiliency and sustainability. And there are five policies under this, and some of those are transitioning the city's fleet to alternative fuels by 2040, encouraging the restoration and reuse of buildings as an alternative to demolition, and inventorying and identifying public and semi-public lands suitable for food production pilot projects. That last one, 4.35. I've actually had some individuals contact me interested in doing those urban farming. So I would love to have that inventory of possible sites, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Any questions on this one? Okay. Please proceed.
Okay. Goal number five is a new goal that covers education of the public on storm-related risks, flood insurance, the natural environment, and sustainability initiatives and best practices. There's only one goal under this, and that's the city needs to continue to conduct outreach and education campaigns on flood risks, the community rating system, recreational facilities, and sustainable best practices. We have five policies under this objective, and some of those are continuing to communicate flood-related risks and the benefits of acquiring flood insurance, promoting education programs at parks and recreation facilities on natural environments, and creating information on sustainability and a wide variety of venues and formats. Another short one.
Questions?
Just a comment. You know, the legislature has just implemented a requirement that citizens are going to need flood insurance going forward. This will apply to many of our constituents who have citizens' property insurance. So I don't know how candidly, I don't know what, I don't know if our outreach is going to change or matter as much because of some of the new legislation that's just going into effect. So just wanted to mention that because it will be a requirement for all of our citizens' property insurance holders, which, and we have a lot of customers here in the city. So just wanted to point that out. That may change the way that we do outreach because now it's going to be educating people not about the benefits of having flood insurance, but the requirement for them to have flood insurance and what that's going to mean. And there are decisions that the council makes that can help maybe a little bit with flood insurance rates, but a lot of it is outside the city's control, too. So just the way that we accomplish that goal, I think, may change probably from the way this may have been originally envisioned. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to our Support Services Chapter. This provides guidance for our public services and utilities. It contains goals, objectives, and policies from our existing utilities elements. And this chapter has been expanded to include police, fire, and EMS, library, and clearwater gas services that have not previously been included. So our first goal is the provision of high-quality, reliable, and efficient sanitary sewer service for the city, and there are five objectives to support this goal. 1.1 is maintaining a level of service for the existing and future populations with the policy that we use 100 gallons per capita per day as our level of service for sanitary sewer and when determining if there's capacity to serve any development or redevelopment. 1.2 is continue to provide advanced wastewater treatment improvements at our water reclamation facilities. And we have four policies here. Some of those include continuing to improve and expand the wastewater system to accommodate future development, and continuing to implement projects that support the city's decision to consolidate water reclamation facilities. 1.3 is provide and maintain sanitary sewer service in a safe and efficient manner. Six policies under this include maintaining the wastewater collection system to serve existing developments, requiring properties with failing septic tanks to connect to our sewer system, and requiring annexation and sufficient capacity to serve a property prior to providing sanitary sewer service to properties outside of the city limits. 1.4 is maintaining equitable charges to support fiscal and capital projects and provide efficient financial management of all sewer funds. There are four policies under this, and some of those are prioritizing and scheduling major wastewater collection and treatment improvements as part of our capital improvement program, ensuring sanitary sewer revenues are sufficient to fund repair and replacement projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, and ensuring sanitary sewer charges reflect all operational costs consistent with the amount of wastewater generated by each user. And last, 1.5 is to use fully-treated reclaimed water in a cost-effective way. Four policies under this include encouraging long-term agreements with golf course operators and other groups to use reclaimed water for irrigation, and expanding the reclaimed water system to optimize potable water conservation efforts.
Any questions?
Goal two is providing solid waste collection and disposal services that balance reliability, environmental impacts, costs, and safety. We have four objectives to provide direction to this goal. 2.1, as a city should focus on data collection and active route management as a tool to achieve efficiency. There are three policies under this objective to include reviewing traffic patterns to help determine route length and timing of pickup, and evaluating opportunities to shift from active waste management to passive waste management. 2.2 is ensuring solid waste is collected as scheduled and disposed appropriately. We have three policies under this objective include ensuring solid waste recycling fees charged to users cover system's operating costs, repayment of capital costs, and allow for repair and replacement of existing facilities, and maintaining a master plan for solid waste facilities that ensures upgrades necessary to meet standards of efficiency are planned appropriately. 2.3 is supporting the countywide goal of zero waste to the county landfill. We have four policies under this objective, including developing a solid waste collection and recycling disposal and recovery system that will reduce the waste stream, conserve energy, and minimize impact on natural resources, and continuing to reduce the solid waste stream through recycling. And 2.4 is mitigate the impact of solid waste collection and disposal to natural resources. We have four policies under this objective, including continuing to work to limit carbon emissions of the fleet vehicles, and continuing voluntary curbside source separation for recycling.
Questions on this?
Three is the provision of cost-effective and efficient stormwater management. So we have five objectives to support this goal. 3.1 is continue to maintain the adequate level of service for existing and future populations, and the policy is to continue to use the level of service described in the table provided in the plan. 3.2 is lowering high-water profiles during storm events to reduce flooding and lessen the resulting adverse effects on the public health, natural environment, and public and private property. The seven policies under this objective, some of those include continuing to provide regular maintenance to our stormwater management system, considering natural and non-man-made wetlands as means to provide stormwater management, and continuing to designate wetlands as preservation on the future land use. 3.3 is protecting and enhancing the quality of receiving water bodies by using best management practices. We have eight policies under this objective, and some of those are monitoring major stormwater management outfalls in receiving water bodies to identify the quality of runoff and the impact on receiving water bodies. Continuing to identify impaired water bodies and prioritizing them for improvement and enhancements. And continuing to upgrade and retrofit drainage facilities and include stormwater treatment for water quality. 3.4 is providing sound fiscal management of our stormwater management systems. Four objectives under this. Some include to finance the operation and maintenance of stormwater management systems through revenues from the city's stormwater utility fee, and continuing to upgrade or improve stormwater management systems where deficiencies exist. And lastly, 3.5 is providing economic development incentives that promote water resource protection and enhancement. And we have three policies here, including evaluating methods of financing stormwater management system improvements and new stormwater infrastructure to determine the most feasible and equitable arrangement, and pursuing a regional stormwater management system that is both economically and environmentally sound.
Any questions?
Okay. Goal number four is the provision of a permanent potable water supply, and there are six objectives to support goal four. 4.1 is to continue to maintain an adequate level of service for existing and future populations, and the policy is to use 100 gallons per capita per day at a minimum pressure of 40 to 45 pounds per square inch as the potable water level of service. 4.2 is providing adequate quantity and quality of potable water to all customers. We have seven policies under this, including construct potable water system improvements that provide adequate quantity, pressure, and duration of flows while working to conserve energy, water, and other valuable resources. Ensuring our potable water management projects are designed and operated to maintain and enhance natural systems as well as man-made systems, and continuing to send water services to jurisdictions outside the city's service area through interlocal or other agreements. 4.3 is maintaining the water system in a safe and efficient manner. We have three policies under this, including monitoring the water quality and operation of the water distribution system with the intent of repairing and replacing deficient portions of the system, and requiring minimum fire flows, hydrant spacing, and proper-sized water pipes to provide fire flow when viewing applications for new connections to the public water system. 4.4 is providing sound fiscal management for the operation and maintenance of the potable water system. Four policies under this include prioritizing and scheduling major improvements to the water system as a component of our capital improvement program, and continuing to seek financial support of the water system through grant programs administered by state and federal agencies. 4.5 is developing a potable water system that's compatible with the environment and seeks to conserve and protect sensitive natural resources. Three policies under this include implementation of our water restriction ordinance and continuing education to inform citizens of the need to and the opportunities for conservation, conserving potable water. 4.6 is protecting all natural recharge areas having a functional hydrological characteristics. Three policies under this. Some include recognizing the importance of groundwater aquifer recharge and the need for groundwater recharge as an integral component of the city's urban environment, and continuing to protect groundwater quality by enforcing our wellhead protection ordinance.
Any questions?
All right. Goal five is a new goal that covers the permanent reclaimed water system supply. And we have three goals to provide support for that. The three objectives. 5.1 is to continue to maintain our reclaimed water system in a safe and efficient manner. And there's only one policy, and that's monitoring the water quality and operation of the reclaimed water distribution system with the intent of repairing and replacing deficient portions of the system. 5.2 is to provide a sound fiscal management for the operation and maintenance of a reclaimed water system. And there are two policies there, and that's continuing to use fees charged to users of reclaimed water services to cover system operating costs, repayment of capital costs, and allowing for the repair and replacement of existing facilities. And then prioritizing and scheduling major improvements to the reclaimed water system as a component of the capital improvement program. And then 5.3 is the city should continue to develop a reclaimed water system that's compatible with the environment and seeks to conserve and protect natural resources. And there's only one policy, and that is to continue to extend our reclaimed water system.
Questions?
Okay. Goal number six is also a new goal to cover the provision of effective, professional, and dependable law enforcement. We have three objectives to support goal. 6.1 is to continue to maintain and replace law enforcement building infrastructure and vehicles as needed. We have six policies under this objective, and some of those are continuing the scheduled maintenance for District Stations 2 and 3, determining if District Station 1 should be rebuilt or refurbished, and continuing to evaluate the best uses for satellite buildings. 6.2 is to monitor crime and activity metrics and compare them against other local agencies. There are two policies under this objective, and that are upgrading our monitoring systems to state and national incident-based reporting systems, and providing governance for a regional computer-aided dispatch and records management system that promotes the efficient sharing of resources and information. And lastly, 6.3 is to build expertise and capacity to respond to cybercrime, synthetic drugs, and process digital evidence. And we have one policy here, and that's to identify and implement progressive staffing models that are cost-effective and advance the efficient and effective prevention, detection, and prosecution of crime.
Any questions? Please continue.
All right. Goal number seven is another new goal for our emergency services to focus on quality, cost effectiveness, and all hazard mitigation. And we have three objectives to support this goal. 7.1 is to ensure adequate staffing levels, equipment, and apparatus are maintained. We have three policies under this. And some include to achieve the baseline response time of seven and a half minutes for first unit arrival to response calls, and research methods to account for low employment pools while maintaining appropriate staffing levels. 7.2 is to maintain and replace infrastructure, equipment, and apparatus on a regular schedule. Three policies under this include completing Fire Station 46 reconstruction by the end of 2023 and continuing the process of replacing the training tower and lifeguard towers. And lastly, 7.3 is research methods and best practices to account for increases in future demand, construction, populations, and tourism. And we have three policies here, and some of those include researching and determining means to maintain service times through increases in traffic, and determining strategies to account for increases in high-rise and multifamily developments.
I have a question on seven. So it's great that we have a date for completing Fire Station 46, which is on schedule. That's fantastic. But we don't have a date with complete the construction of new Fire Station 47 to replace the existing Fire Station 47. Is there a reason why we don't have a target date on that one?
I do not think there's one for fire.
I mean, I think we're overdue. It's, yeah.
I can check in with them and get an answer for you. Okay. New goal number eight is the provision of quality information, continuous learning, and innovative services at city libraries that anticipate and support the needs of the city. We only have one objective here, and that's to ensure libraries evolve to meet the changing needs of library users. We have three policies, and some of those are studying the feasibility of increasing meeting spaces in libraries to allow for more community meetings, group collaborations, or individual group studies, and continuing to provide numerous programs and services for users of all ages. And that wraps up to number nine. And that's for...
A quick one about eight. I think, you know, some of your other goals talk about education, promoting, and all that stuff. And I think it'd be nice to maybe include some of those words for our libraries. I'm particularly excited about this one, that people are going to be walking by all the time now at the park, and really to promote how fantastic our libraries are for people to use.
Since this draft was posted, we had worked the library to expand this to include more policies and objectives. All right. And lastly is our goal number nine. It covers a provision and expansion of cost-effective gas energy solutions and related products to our customers in Pinellas and Pasco counties. We have five objectives to support goal nine. 9.1 is the city should apply for grant funding to assist with costs related to repairing, rehabilitating, or replacing natural gas distribution pipeline. There are two policies under this objective, and they are upgrading our above-ground infrastructure that will help reduce methane gas released into the atmosphere, and continuing to increase safety and reliability of the gas distribution system through repairs and replacements. 9.2 is the research of feasibility of entering renewable energy markets. Two policies here, and that's determining if writing renewable energy products and services would be profitable as a standalone business unit for the clearwater gas system to operate on behalf of the city, and considering implementation of a pilot project for renewable energy products. And considering implementation of a pilot project for renewable energy products and services to test the market. Nine point three is to revise and implement the new sales and marketing plan for the clear water gas system. Um, there are three policies here and some of those include updating their clear water gas system logo. And increasing marketing efforts to um, potential info customers where gas infrastructure already exists and is ready to use. Excuse me. And then nine point four is to create new key performance indicators for all gas divisions. There are four policies here, including um, reviewing all existing KPIs, identifying ones to retire, modify. Um, and then ensure new KPIs include health and safety, contractor status remains and services, profit and loss for retail service functions and several others. And then nine point five is to update the five year clear water gas system strategic plan. And there are two policies to support this and that is holding a kickoff meeting with all department sections and individual sections to perform updates. And revising the department's mission, vision and core value statements.
Any questions?
I like uh, goal nine. Objective um, nine point two, research the feasibility of entering renewable energy markets is, is great. But I just, I wonder with um, do you see any kind of conflict um, or alignment issues between your coastal conservation and coastal management goals four and five and then goal nine? Because I, I see that there might be some conflict there. And you know, this is our whole comprehensive plan. So I just um, would look at those, those especially nine point three point one. Because if we have a whole chapter devoted to conservation and coastal management and we have our um, sustainability plan, great print two point oh, and then we, you know, the nine point three point one doesn't seem to align real well with that.
You can take a look at it. All right, that wraps it up. We still have our public meetings on June twenty-seventh and June twenty-ninth to present the full plan. And then we still have our path forward to bring forward the full plan to public hearing to the community development board on August fifteenth. And then uh, we before you for first hearing on September twenty-first. And then again, we have pushed back the second hearing to December twenty-first at the earliest weeks on, giving us a couple of weeks to respond to whatever state comments we get back.
Can I just say, this, this was really interesting reading. I mean, you guys have done so much work on all the chapters, not just the ones presented today, but this is really the best practices of how to run a city for all the, you know, major departments outward facing. And um, and it's, it's a wonderful comprehensive plan. Um, I'm looking forward to having it adopted and then uh, holding true to it for twenty years or so. Well, is it, what did we think it? Yeah.
For twenty years.
Twenty years or so, uh, going forward with really best decisions and practices. So thank you very much for making it really readable and um, it was good.
Thank you. Okay, Office of Innovation, seven point one.
Review a first year of energy savings with synergistic.
Michael Maxwell, Chief Innovation Officer. Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, city manager asked us to do a update on synergistic. Uh, for those that do not know what synergistic is, it is our energy savings program. Uh, we entered into an agreement with them back in March of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and began the program really starting in April of twenty twenty-two. So we have our first year of data related to the electrical and gas savings. With us here today is David Goff from synergistic to go over those. David?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
It's a pleasure to be here in front of you and presenting our, our first year of our energy conservation program, our, of what we have learned and what we've been able to accomplish in our partnership. It's been uh, it's been a great one so far and it's getting better right now. So really excited to be here to give you this uh, this presentation. Uh, so just to, to begin, uh, this is the, we have a GreenX system. And this, this is uh, our software that really, it's our workflow. This is what we, we go out in the buildings and we find, uh, collect, gather information and we run it through our system. And this is what uh, brings information back to the operations group because we partner very closely with them and uh, to achieve the, the energy saving. Our partner, our, our goals are, is really to protect uh, clear water facilities, uh, building health with active monitoring. Uh, occupants comfort, uh, comfort improvement, eliminate wasted energy use is of course a big one. And then to develop a, a conservation mindset. Our operation initiatives um, that we have, uh, that we, that we follow here is aligning our HVAC use with occupancy. And again, that takes a lot of communication. I have my energy specialists here with us, Fabian Uribe. And Fabian is one of our energy specialists. Uh, another one that was with us last year, we have two energy specialists on site, Kristen Wheatley. Uh, Kristen is currently out on maternity leave. And so we have two dedicated employees that are based here in, inside city, uh, the city of Clearwater, even though they're, they're synergistic employees. And so the, the magic here is a lot of communication, a lot of discussion with various uh, the building owners and aligning our HVAC use with occupancy, uh, and making sure that it comes on just at the right times for people to be comfortable. Adjusting our temperature set points uh, and to meet with our city guidelines. Optimizing HVAC and lighting, lighting systems, uh, equipment. Uh, collaborating with uh, city operations on equipment efficiency and efficacy. And your, uh, your technicians here have been wonderful to work with, by the way. Active comfort and moisture management monitoring, there's a lot of communication that we, our system, our uh, work order system lets us know when we have uncomfortable spaces. That comes into us and Fabian and Kristen goes, uh, goes and meets and, and actually discusses the problem and issues. And then we can bring it back to the operations group. And we, I mean, this is fantastic here, but uh, right now there's over five thousand hours of monthly HVAC scheduling that have been reduced in the city. Which is a pretty amazing, uh, pretty amazing number. So here to get to, again, we've had, uh, we've had one year performance, began last year, April of twenty-two. Um, and it went uh, and ended the last day of March. Uh, the graphs that we will talk about today is going to be comparing this past uh, performance year to the base year. The base year, we had to find something that was somewhat normal and we had to go back to pre-COVID times to get some, some normalcy here. Okay? So uh, the times that we're comparing to is March of nineteenth, February of twenty, before we could finally find something that was somewhat normal to compare back to. Um, so the last twelve months, um, here's, here's what we've been able to accomplish. It's, uh, again, it's fantastic and it's getting better right now. You can see that the city had a nine percent overall reduction in, in electricity consumption. Um, but uh, a real key year here is a thirteen percent reduction in those, what we would think would be the summertime months, the hot months of the year. Um, we really, uh, we had a very cool fall and winter here compared back to the base year. So that kind of limits uh, some of the opportunity that we had. But you take that snapshot there of April when we started through uh, October of twenty-two, we think that that's what's ahead of us. And we could already see a really good March developing right now. So. And then, so we take your, your, your consumption, which that's really the only thing that we focus on is electricity consumption reduction. And uh, natural gas consumption reduction and water and sewer uh, reduction. But here we also monitor your uh, utility rates and have to uh, give you the information. So that's your utility rates currently for um, our, our last twelve months as compared back to the base year. The base year is the darker lines and um, I mean, the, the base year is the green lines and the, the current is the darker lines. And as you can see, and as you've heard everywhere in media, our, um, our utility rates are going up everywhere significantly. And so you can see there, you were already higher, um, and then as of December, you really jumped up there and, and it's not just here, it's, it's everywhere. So uh, it reflects the overall blended unit cost of electricity that the city electric meters are incurring. Uh, we're seeing an overall increase of twenty-three percent for electricity here. Yes, significant. Um, and uh, so you know, our, our, the, the consumption reduction is, is the key thing that we're, we're enacting here and trying to uh, monitor and, and, and impress and then uh, get improved there. Uh, the last twelve months that uh, that we have seen your rates have increased for electricity by twenty percent. So today, every unit saved is worth more than it was back in, in the base year. And here's your electrical spend uh, throughout the city that we monitor. There are some electricity meters that we don't, we can't impact. Um, you know, uh, some of your large uh, uh, water meters, uh, city, uh, the sewage and things like that, we can't enact uh, there and change, uh, implement there. But as you can see, uh, the black line is the current spend uh, that the city is uh, incurring in meters that we monitor. The green line is the base year and it's uh, you know, it's, it's, it's more of mitigation today. Uh, lowering the, the consumption um, mitigates the overall cost. And you can see right there that just because the, the rate increase, it coincides very nicely with those bars, those bar graphs that you saw go up so much in that twenty something percent range. So that's kind of where we are right now with, with uh, the spend. Here's the natural gas slides. Um, again, the black, uh, the black line, the dark line is our current. Uh, the green was the base year. Um, and you can see right there a really nice profile as we go through. And again, we're getting better there. Uh, so that's a, that's just a, a, a really uh, a nice look at uh, at the natural gas consumption and what we have seen so far. Uh, the spin, uh, your natural gas spin here is, is flat pretty well. You're not seeing a lot of increases in your natural gas spin. Over the United States, um, we're seeing forty, uh, up to sixty percent natural, natural gas unit cost increases. So here you're doing uh, you know, you, you somewhat uh, and you're better than, than most of the country here. So uh, it is relatively stable with your cost. The overall savings uh, for this period that we, the last twelve months, we're in about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the meters that, that we can impact. Uh, and the cost increases um, that, that uh, will apply to your budget. Uh, the energy program in its first uh, performance year, again, is at four fifty, that's a ten point four percent savings over what had been spent had the energy savings initiatives not been enacted in the city. Uh, in fact, a, a little tidbit here, uh, the, if you could bottle up the energy saved in this first year, uh, the electricity and natural gas that you have saved, uh, you, you could use it to power the main library building uh, that we're in right now for two years and have no cost at, at all for that. So again, a nice little, a nice little tidbit. So again, uh, you know, our, our uh, conservation uh, efforts, uh, of course it impacts the utility bills and costs, which is really important to uh, to any government uh, entity today. But it also translates into the benefits of the environment, uh, which, you know, you guys are, y'all are way ahead of most people as far as uh, conservation and the initiatives you take. But the energy saved in the first year of the, of the uh, energy program here would be as equivalent as planting thirty-six thousand uh, trees, you know, uh, to request the, uh, the carbon, uh, taking five million, over five million miles uh, off uh, the roads with greenhouse gas. Uh, powering two hundred and seventy-five homes, the equivalent of greenhouse gas emissions for one year. And seven hundred and fifty-seven tons of greenhouse gas emissions uh, for wasted, uh, waste recycling too. And so again, uh, green is, is really important here. I do have a, a couple of slides that I would like to just show you for your uh, information. This first slide is uh, at North Greenwood Library. It, this is a, this is a look of our, what we break everything down to the meter level and look at it. And so this is the past uh, week at Green, at North Greenwood Library, our interval data look, which takes fifteen minute segments. And we see where our energy consumption is every fifteen minutes. And so if we look at this particular meter, you can see there on a, on a seven day period, uh, pre-conservation, uh, you can see that kind of dark line there. Where the energy was being used and consumed and it was, it was uh, quite a bit higher. The light blue line shows that our, at night in the evenings, that those lines are coming down and coming to a more of a, a better resting rate. And so again, saving energy during the, the, the times when the buildings are not, uh, not occupied. And that's our, that's our key goal is, is making sure that we're not wasting energy uh, in times when there's nobody in the buildings. So that's a, that's a nice look right there. And uh, the next look is more of a monthly look and uh, this is at the long center, electricity. Again, it's interval data that shows every fifteen minutes. And um, it can, it shows you a week of one, two, three, four uh, of, of the previous month. And again, you can see that um, pre-conservation uh, timeline where energy was, it was a lot higher. And now it's coming down and resting and it, when it, at the day, uh, the optimization, it doesn't go up as high, you know? We, we, again, we have squeezed it and squeezed the top as well. So again, those are the, those are the things that we look at, you know, and kind of getting into weeds a little bit here. So um, hope that's okay uh, with you. But that's uh, that, that's where we are and that's what we do. And I'm uh, again, very excited where we are right now. Um, we are seeing um, we're seeing April numbers um, uh, basically double what we were in April last year. Um, so we're excited about that. We have uh, we've learned what we need to learn. We have met a lot of people. Uh, of course, we have implemented where we felt we had uh, lower hanging fruit, the easiest places to, to capture that. Uh, there's some places that we're just now starting to implement and we're having great, uh, great success and, and uh, partnership like the fire, uh, the fire stations. That's one of the latter ones that, that we talked last year that we were going to implement in, the fire stations is. And so we're just now getting in there. We're looking at some other areas right now like the fire station to, to get in and capture that. So. Um, anyway, that's a presentation where we are after uh, one year. Um, very excited to be here, uh, partnering with you, uh, and, and saving energy and the environment. So questions about anything?
Questions, comments, yes?
I love this stuff. Thank you for coming. You came from Texas, right? Didn't you live in Texas?
Yes, I did, Dallas.
So I wanted to ask, so what are some of the next steps? Um, and where are the additional, so what are the next steps and do you see any additional add-on opportunities to save money?
Yes, um, and again, implementing in the fire station is, is, is a big one. But again, we have to uh, you know, that, they live there. And so we have to, you have to have some, um, you have to ease into that and, and partner with that. But we met with, uh, we met with the fire chief last month and uh, and just, we were talking about what was reasonable. We have energy guidelines, but it's, it's, it's not quite the same for them. So, but we're, we're going to implement there. We have a whole uh, a, a whole floor there on uh, uh, Fire Station Forty-five that we can start setting back at night. Because those are mainly administrative uh, offices. Uh, as controls are uh, improved and implemented in the district, we can start, like right now, we have some whole buildings that our control systems manage and monitor. But the controls that are being upgraded and, and entered right now, um, you can piece out and parcel out spaces if that makes sense. So we're going after those areas also, which makes a lot, makes a lot of difference. Just, just the overall behavior part of it, uh, where people. Just, just the overall behavioral part of it, where people, we're, we're, we're working better. If, if somebody right now schedules a, a, a space, a gym or whatever, and in the past, if they scheduled it, we scheduled it on for them. If it didn't, if they didn't hold that event or whatever, they might not, you know, let us know. Those things are happening now.
Good, good. That communication.
It's just the program, it's, it's better established right now. It's, it's more, a more of a culture in the city. And again, it'll continue getting better. Those are, those are some of the things. There's, there's other initiatives, but that's, again, we're, we're implementing, starting to discuss opportunities in, in the police stations as well. And looking at those.
So all the meters, you, some of your data says, you know, this, this only includes the meters that you have access to. Are, are you monitoring and do you have access to all the meters that you would ever have access to? Or are there some that are, you still have to develop access to them?
We have, we have access to all the meters.
Okay.
All of them. But we only implement in, you know, the certain meters. Like again, some, there's some big pumps for the refuse. We, we enter the bills, how much they are, and we track those for accounting purposes. But we, but we have, we have access to all buildings, all meters. Again, the support we've had has been just terrific. Micah, Peter, operations, it's been, it's been fantastic. They have, it's important to them.
That's great. I was going to ask about the hyper-monitoring of the bills, but you said you're doing that with all, all the paperwork and all the bills?
Yes, we enter the bills straight off of, and all the demand charges and, and everything comes straight off the bills for all meters. Right at 2,000, a lot of meters in the city.
Is that number that we've saved, 450,000 in savings this year? Is that what you predicted that we would save the first year or is it over, under?
We're predicted to save about 4.2 to 4.3 throughout the contract.
Okay.
And so this is a little lower than I really would have liked it to be. But again, I think we're going to end up doubling each month moving forward, so we should far exceed it.
Okay. And then are you involved at all with electricity consumption at Coachman Park and monitoring there with our new park?
The way that's going to have to, and Mike and I, we discussed it a little bit. The way that'll have to be is we'll have to let it establish a base year. So we have something to compare about too. We will actively implement there to, you know, to make sure that, that the program, how it's implemented in the rest of the city will be implemented, be, it'll kind of be a standard look there. But, but we won't be comparing data there probably for a year.
Okay. And then I had a question about, I think it's the slide with City of Clearwater electricity unit cost. So those unit costs obviously are set by Duke, right?
Right.
And so why is it, does it, does our unit cost set by Duke fluctuate month to month a little bit? Or is that just my visual?
It does fluctuate. Well, it's, it's all based on, your, your electricity is fired by natural gas. And so they, they purchase that natural gas, so it's a pass, it's a pass-through. That's one of the things. Then you have other components to your electricity bill. You have a demand charge, a demand rate. That's going to be fluctuating as well. So you got, for your electricity bill, you may have 10 different line items per one meter.
Okay.
And so that's what makes it fluctuate.
Okay. And then I had a question on, okay, so we've got the meters. And so the City of Clearwater electrical spend, while it looks like, you know, the current year we're spending more, it's because Duke is charging more. Our consumption is down, so we're just clear on that. And then the City of Clearwater natural gas use, where in the city do we use natural gas? Or what are our opportunities to reduce that? Is it mostly in the, in the fires, the places where police and fire are there?
No, you have, I mean, of course, you, you have a couple of buildings that are, that are powered by natural gas, some chillers that are fired by natural gas. And that's, and we're doing extremely well there in, in those. But of course, all the boilers, you do reheat spaces for humidity control. You cool them, doesn't, it, you cool them down and then you heat them up to dry out air sometimes. So you do, you do use natural gas in those areas. And of course, just all the, the heating of the water and things like that for, for really use.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this? All right. Thank you. 7.2 please.
Preview solar implementation plan?
It's Michael Maxwell, Chief Innovation Officer again. Yes, we have been working towards our, our solar goals over the last, last year. For those that were not here in 2022, in 2022, fiscal year 2022, we, we began a, a implementation planning study to try to figure out what information we needed, what we had, what we did not have. And we didn't have a lot of the data that, that we needed to have at that point. So we collected it once we determined what it was with our third-party consultants. And then we created a model with the help of that consultant to try to, to try to provide us an opportunity to, to implement in a smart way. So that study ended in December of 2022, so just recently. And the information then came back to the city. And we've been working since then to, to tweak it a little bit because there were some, some variables that have changed from the initial to now. A big one was the initial did not include, or we didn't have, the city did not have any funding source for, for solar. We were not budgeting necessarily for solar outside of general capital projects. And that wasn't specific, it was very general. But in last summer, there were two decisions that were made that changed that a little bit. One was the, the allocation we received from the Department of Energy. That, that came in, actually, that came in just last week as far as the paperwork is concerned. But, but we received notification last summer that we were going to be receiving the, the allocation from DOE. The second was that the city council's allocation of $2 million of ARPA funds to solar, for solar buildings specifically. So those were things that changed a little bit from the original. And we also worked through some, some various resource questions over, over the last year and a half. We've had some changes, not only to our staffing, but also to, to our, I guess, knowledge about what, what we believed mattered as it relates to, to trying to figure out how to best implement. So as I said, the, the two funding sources that we received, DOE and, and ARPA were, were big, big items for us. One of the biggest parts of those was the fact that we, we had some timing requirements on them. The DOE grant starts a year after we execute the agreement. So, I'm sorry, it ends a year after we execute the agreement. So that's going to be coming pretty soon. You know, we have the agreement now, we're, we're going to be putting it through and, and then that clock will start. So that's a pretty quick timeline. We also have a little longer timeline in ARPA. ARPA has a, a commitment date of end of 2024, so we have a little time there. But we do need to spend it by the end of 2026 as well. So our, our front-end focus here is really on, on trying to get the DOE money out the door and then, then also trying to focus a little more long-term on the, on the ARPA funds. What we've tried to provide you in your, in your documentation is our plan for, for implementing the better part of those dollars. The, the front-end focus really is on three buildings. One is our fleet building, General Services Building, that Mr. Bardot is housed in. That is scheduled for a re-roof this, this, end of the summer. It is a very large roof. It gets a lot of sun and we can, we can save a lot of the energy use with that facility. So it's a, so it's a great opportunity and the timing is such that it makes a lot of sense with the, with the timing of the re-roof. The second one is our Countryside Recreation Center. That one you may remember, we, we actually did some work on last December. And at that time, we, we made sure that it was solar-ready. And so the mounting exists there. We really just, we have some other issues at the building that we're trying to work through. As soon as those are completed, we would refocus on trying to put the solar in that facility. And the third is the, as always, transfer station. The building's not, not that old. It's about, I believe it was 2017, 2018 that it, that it came into service. But it also has a lot of opportunity for some savings with some solar panels on the roof. So it's a little more complicated being into a roof, and so we'll, we'll work through that best we can. Those three should help us meet the DOE requirements. And we, and they should help us do that within the timeline that, that we're talking about. We do have some, some backup projects that we can use if need be. But, but those projects total out to right around 1.2 million dollars. We also have some longer-term projects that are connected to some of our, our capital projects. One is the Long Center. I know that we're going to be making some decisions about how exactly we want to, we want to implement the, the auditorium changes. That will drive some of this. But those projects are a little further out. They're, they're looking at right around the end of this calendar year prior to, to either that one or our Osceola Garage implementing. So really, it, it makes a lot more sense for the ARPA funds rather than these funds. Because I'm not, I can't guarantee that they'll be expended by the time the DOE year is up. So those bring us up to around 2.5 million in funds. We also have several options for, for other installations, which we're, we're trying to work through the best we can to, to figure out what the right timing is. And there's some different drivers for those. For, for the MSB garage and the Garton Avenue garage, there's a couple, a couple of issues. One, MSB garage, there may be some opportunity to use that, that energy generated off-site. We're not super confident about that, but we're working through it. So we're hopeful, we have the actual meeting later this week to sort of discuss that some more. If there is an opportunity, we would push that up in the, in the timing and probably capture energy sooner rather than later. And then provide that to the, to the neighboring facility, which is the Waste Department. If it's not, and this goes for Garton Avenue Garage as well, it really depends on our timing for EV vehicles. And some of that is impacted by the, the mere fact that we can't seem to, to acquire any because there's not a lot to acquire for us. So we're working through that issue, but, but really, we don't want to install those solar panels on those two garages if we don't have anything to power. So that's, that's a balancing, balancing act for us. The other installations that we're looking at are really sort of like the garage and MSB installations, which were sort of carport installs on, on the roof of the two garages. So you'd basically be creating shade and capturing energy and then powering either the neighboring building or the cars. The other three are really sort of the same concept, but on a, on a ground, ground level, right? There are three areas and they're very, they're sort of odd lots. I've included them in your, in your packets. One is the, the Rockaway Lot where the Fire Station 46 is. Also, there's a park on that site and a big parking lot, right? It's right between Frenchies and Palm Pavilion. So there's, there's some opportunity. We were unable to, to install solar on Fire Station 46 at this time because the peel and stick application that we hoped to be able to put on, it went out of business and it just didn't make any sense at that point. This has become an alternative to that. Where in essence, we would place carport-type structures in part of the parking lot for the parking lot of the public, right? So basically, we'd be creating shade for people to park in and then generating electricity there, sending it back to the fire station to power that building and potentially using some of it for some public chargers as well. A similar application could also exist in the parking lot between the Beach Library and Recreation Center and the beach pool. There's a rather large parking lot there as well. And it gives us some opportunity to send power one way or the other. So we're exploring that as well. And then the third version is, is over by the North Greenwood Library. That's another lot that, that includes many things. The library, Walter C. Campbell Field, and a lot of, there's a parking lot there as well. So there's a lot of different items that, you know, creating shade will help, will give us some benefit. Whether it's for the vehicles, whether it's for spectators of, of sporting events, to get them out of the sun or to get them out of the rain. And then we can, we can move that electricity either back to the, to the library or utilize it for car charging or potentially for, for the, the lights on those facilities if we have some, some battery capacity. So those are some of the other items that we're looking at longer term. We're, we're working with planning on, on some of the, of those last three because they aren't necessarily things that would fall into our code now. But in discussing it with planning, there is certainly some opportunity to make some adjustments to the code that make a lot of sense citywide, not just for these three, but, but for the city generally. So we're exploring those with them and seeing if, if those requirements will need to be made or if, or if we can install them as-is. That'll happy, happy to answer any questions or if you have any, any comments?
Thank you, Micah. I know it's, it's a long report, but I really appreciate it. Been waiting for it for quite a while. So, you know, you all can decide where to put them. But just a clarification, so the $1 million from Department of Energy, we can spend and get up on the roof somewhere with solar. The $2 million that we allocated from ARPA really comes from general funds, so we don't have a 2026 encumbrance, right? So, but I mean, I want them up as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the cleanest way for us to operate is for us to, to expend in the ARPA timelines. I think that would probably make Kate feel a little better.
I think so too.
You know, it, it avoids any potential audit issues, but we probably do have some flexibility there. But we do believe we can also spend it by then.
And I hope so because here's about, I mean, this is, this is what I think is most important. And, and I'm going to start by saying, I know that we are, I've said this earlier in the meeting hours ago, we are very understaffed. We are. And so I'm not putting any more on anybody's plate and we don't have a sustainability director either. But what, the way I look at this is we have $3 million that is earmarked for solar and it's sitting in an account. And if we don't, we're losing money every single day. We do not have that free money with zero payback time up on the roof with solar. So we have got to get this money spent on solar and get it up there. So according to your, you know, when you, when I asked you for some of the estimated savings, it's like a million dollars a year in the first year. And it's 10 million over 30 years. I want an extra million dollars every year right now. And so when I've got 3 million sitting there, I'm ready to write a check and get those solar panels up there so we can start saving money. So I, I hope, you know, I hope we can make wise decisions and, and, and make it, make it happen. So I, I, I appreciate that. The other thing I would ask is, Will, do you have any information about whether or not the solar panels will be turned on for our grand opening on the 28th on Coachman Park? So that when we celebrate, they really are on? And can we report what the estimated annual savings is to the city with those?
So I don't know if they are going to be on or not. I, I assume they would. Tara, do you know?
I would assume so also.
I, I just know that there have been some community buildings in the community where it's been a struggle to get their solar turned on. And Trinity Presbyterian Church rises to the top months, like seven months to turn it on. Seven months of losing money.
On the, on the reporting, you know, as soon as we have a sense of what the savings is, and, and, you know, I missed the, the meeting a couple of weeks ago that we had internally about solar software for that, for what's being installed. I know that, that was something that was, that they went over to see, you know, how to get track of those sorts of things. We should be able to pull that data relatively quickly. And then it's just a matter of comparing it to the, to the rate for that particular meter and what's being offset. So that one, that one should be pretty quick.
Okay. And then speaking of that, you know, just like the center logistics, you know, you're And then speaking of that, you know, just like the synergistics, you know, your estimated savings over 30 years of $10 million. I mean, I don't know if we plan on Duke's fast acceleration of rates, but it certainly could be a lot more, right?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it could be more, you know, I will say the synergistics adjustments that they've had, they will impact it potentially as well and actually reduce it a little bit because we're not using as much energy in some cases, right? But the reality is that we anticipate the rates going up as we have each of our installations moving forward. And all of these will require council approval when we actually go to install or to get funding for the project. So at that time, we'll be able to give you better numbers. These are obviously estimates based on a lot of different variables, which could change. But, you know, we'll bring those forward when we bring forward those projects.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I had sent a story to the city manager and the attorney about insurance companies and solar and not doing, not insuring commercial buildings. Does that affect us at all?
It sounds like, and I did speak to RISC about this a bit as well. I'm not sure if Todd's here or not. But, you know, in discussing it with RISC, the issue really seems to be on buildings that have existing roofs. So the only one on this list that might have some issues and we'll explore it further is the transfer station, Solace Transfer Station, because that's a newer roof. The other ones that we have here, being solar-ready, you know, being installed at the same time, from what I can tell, and speaking to RISC, there may be some impact, but it'll be minimal. The not ensuring, that is a larger issue that would really relate to roofs that would be receiving solar but are not new roofs.
Okay. So are we going to get a clarification on that to make sure? I'm for solar, but I talked to my insurance guy and he said, basically residential was okay. Almost all the insurance companies were insuring residential, but a lot of commercial companies were not insuring commercial. So I just want to make sure.
Absolutely a consideration that we want to bring forward to you whenever we bring it installed, right? So when we bring this fleet installation, Todd, we'll have Todd report out on the effect of that.
Okay, fair enough.
I guess that, so this is secondhand from talking with Todd, but he spoke with Arthur Gallagher, who is our insurance broker, and they have been for a long time. Arthur Gallagher has advised that they will ensure and continue to get insurance for our facilities that have solar. However, the insurance companies will exclude certain perils. And so they will cover it against repair issues, but probably not against storm damage. So it will not prevent us from putting solar on, it will not prevent us from insuring our building, it will not prevent us from having the solar panels insured, but there will likely be an exclusion for storm damage. And Arthur Gallagher has advised that they are seeing that, just kind of not specifically Clearwater, but kind of throughout the insurance industry, particularly in the wake of Hurricane Ian. So that is kind of where the market is at right now.
Well, I would add too that there's a town, and I don't know the name, but there's a whole community that had solar that withstood Ian category five in Lee County, I think. So it's, when they're put upright, I mean, you know, there's been advancements and they withstand that.
All right, thank you. All right, city attorney.
Mayor, these are all second readings. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council if there are.
Any questions on the second readings? All right, thank you. City management verbal reports. City attorney verbal reports. Okay, council discussion items, Council 11.1.
Okay, okay. So we had a discussion a few months back where I brought before council the increase of salaries for city council. It was one of my campaign pledges. I went through a lot of reasons why I thought it was a good idea, one of which is that it really minimizes severely the number of our own citizens that are eligible to run and be in council because of the, well, what I like to call unlivable wages and for duration of four years. And I went into detail why and all that. I felt there was some support, however, we did decide to send it to Charter Review Board to look at and discuss and come up with a recommendation, in which they did on May. In May of this year, they voted for a range of 41,000 to 49,000, 49 being the mayor. I realize that this is much lower than what we're talking about. We're talking around in the range of 50 to 70, so that it's comparative to Tampa and St. Pete. However, I think this is a good start. I think it opens the door a little bit, or at least a little bit more. And so I was thinking around the range of 45 for city council and 49 for the mayor. And I'm asking for the city council now to, for support and approve it.
Okay, any comments, questions? It's your pleasure. I know this is always very difficult for people up here because then they have to go out and get reelected and have to listen to people say, oh, you're giving yourself a raise. I don't have to do that, so I don't think it's a bad idea. I think we've been underpaid for years up here. Not me. I mean, you can keep me at the same salary. I don't care, I'm going to be here nine months. I'm talking about people coming in after me and the people on here now that are going to run for reelection and be here for a couple more years. I think a reasonable salary somewhere in the 41,000 to 45,000 range. And I can take the heat for it because what are they going to do, not vote for me next time? So anyway, that's my perspective, but I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say.
It is uncomfortable, very uncomfortable, but it's not the first time I'm uncomfortable up here, and I'm sure it's not going to be the last.
Yeah, he was brought up when I was mayor back in 2002, you know? And anyway, by some, I can't remember who it was, but somebody brought it up.
Just two things to comment on this, just procedurally. Number one, any change in council salaries must be done by ordinance. And so if there is a consensus among council for us to draft an ordinance, then we'll do that. But just procedurally, that would be the start of the process. And then number two, under our city charter, any raise will not go into effect until the next election season, which means that if we were to do that now, it would be effective starting in the 2024 term. So just wanted to, everyone to be aware of that.
Fair enough. I can still count my $15 hour I'm making then, right?
Right.
What's the other, any other discussion? What's your pleasure?
Well, several months ago, I talked about being uncomfortable giving myself a raise. As I've always hated it when I see politicians, usually on the federal level, give themselves a huge boost in the middle of the night. So I feel I'd be hypocritical supporting it. I do say though, that having Charter Review set a fairly modest salary as opposed to the 70,000 that was talked about before, I'm not as troubled by that.
That's fine.
I need to think about it more.
That's fine, fair enough.
Well, like you said, Charter Review's been talking about this far back as I can remember even before that. The problem is, we never can get a young, somebody young on council. And I'd love to have younger people on council, but you know, when you're raising a family, you can't do it. You've got kids and it just, that's why everybody's up here either, you know, I'm just saying, it's either a housewife, retired guy, or CEO that has somebody run their company. I'm not against it. I think we need to probably discuss it more, but that would be, I think that that would give us an opportunity to get some younger people on board.
The thing is, it's not just, oh, it's $27,000 a year. It's the four-year commitment. It's four years of committing to unlivable wages. And I mean, I could just look at my last week's schedule. I wasn't home one day this week between the HOA meetings and all the award ceremonies and the meetings with constituents and all the, and so to have a younger person raising a family, asking them to forego four years of a livable wage, you are limiting the amount of people, our own citizens, that can be up here. And we are missing out on a lot of talented and passionate people that would be great up here. So I said it once before and I say it again, I am risking reelection because I promised this and I truly believe in that. And if that means I'm not going to be reelected, that's okay. I've already sacrificed a lot to be up here and I'm not going to waste my years being safe. And if it means I'm going to be uncomfortable, that's okay, I signed up for it. So I would appreciate, and I think this is the best time to do it. You're not up for reelection. You're here for nine months. I'm willing to take the risk, let's move forward. And that's all. So I'm willing to listen to what you guys are going to say on Thursday or today, whatever.
All right, so if we're, what's, where do we get from here then?
If I hear consensus from the council, then we'll probably just go ahead and put it together and put that as an ordinance. Now, it's going to be a process because it is an ordinance. So remember, it'll come back not only on the future work session, but also on a council vote and then a second vote. So the public certainly will have multiple opportunities to weigh in on it. So everyone's going to have lots of time to think about it. But in order to move forward drafting the ordinance, I would either need to hear consensus from the council, or if the council wants some time to think about it, we could bring this back on Thursday and then council could vote on whether you'd like to direct staff to begin that process, whichever council prefers.
What's your pleasure?
I'm not ready to vote tonight, but I don't, today. I don't anticipate me voting for it. And I hesitate because I don't think the differential, the delta, is that much of a change to make a difference, to get the diversity that we want. I want diversity as well. And I just don't, you know, 40, $45,000 isn't a livable wage.
Some might beg to differ. It's 45,000 times four years, so it's a big difference in four years, but... Anyone else?
I think Thursday night is probably good.
Yeah, I'll time it for 30.
Okay, sounds good. And I, I'm kind of mixed on as far as whether it's going to move the needle. I don't really think it will, but as far as attracting out people with families, because it's a lot of time to put in for 41,000 or 45,000, just as it is for 27, I don't think it's going to move the needle that much. But it doesn't mean I'm not for it. I still think I'd be for it, but I don't think that's going to accomplish that end of things. But we can talk about it Thursday. Okay, fair enough? We good? All right, let's go to 11.2, please.
So with the opening of Imagine Clearwater coming up real quick, I've had several citizens approach me about citizen involvement regarding Coachman Park. It's always been part of the discussion during the whole process of Imagine Clearwater, but now that it's opening up, the conversation started again. And how can we implement that? How can we have citizen engagement, have some say in what's going on with Coachman Park? And I was reviewing different mechanisms and different ways to do it. And I actually asked for Mr. Margolis' counsel to kind of talk me through some of the systems available or mechanisms. And a lot of it is laborious and very complicated. But one of the things that I kind of thought of, and I actually brought it back to those citizens who were talking to me about it, and they actually agreed, is to perhaps city council appoint more members to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and then they form a subcommittee specifically for Coachman Park, so that there is representation from the citizens, so they have a say on what's going on. But the process is already in place and it will be quick and effortless as opposed to forming a new organization or new entity. And so I was hoping to get support in that so that we can get some citizen engagement in the runnings of the Imagine Clearwater.
Any discussion on that? Yes?
I think that's an interesting idea. One thing though is, the Parks and Rec Board isn't quite as active or engaged as like our environmental advisory board. They don't meet quite as frequently. And it's rare that people actually put things on the agenda to discuss, except Patrick Raftery, who's the chair, who does a very good job. And so, I mean, if you want to expand the board by, you know, two or three or four or whatever, the people that really are engaged with or care about Coachman Park, I guess that could work. I mean, maybe it would light a fire under all of them. But it's not a super active or engaged board right now.
I would think that whoever we would appoint would be the citizens that have reached out to us, that they are interested. And as a subcommittee, they would be, you know, I guess, meeting in their own, and being involved in their own way and actually much more active.
What do you see them doing? Because I think scheduling has to be done through Parks and Rec Department. So if somebody wants to have yoga on the green or, you know, a farmer's market on the green, because nothing's going to be scheduled or people aren't going to shape anything that goes on under the amphitheater, right? This is just for the park side, the green side.
What I'm hearing from them is they want input. So if there's something going on, they would like to have their opinion be expressed. They would like to express what they would like to see, how they would like to see it, and evaluate what's going on, just like a typical, you know, advisory board. But this is something that we've been talking about for a long time. And we didn't actually promise it, but it was part of the discussion and I don't want to just back out at the last second.
I agree. I wondered if, I thought like Sam Olley and the neighborhoods kind of did that. Is that the division that would do it more than Parks and Rec? I don't know. For programming and input.
I don't see the neighborhoods so much, but I do see it has to be a group that can envision activity in the park and then carry through with it. You know, they're going to be the keepers of the schedule. And the idea is to get that schedule filled up and not have any overlap or anything. So it's kind of a big job.
I don't think they would be actually, I don't, my perception of, from my conversations with them, I don't think they want to be involved in the day-to-day scheduling. That's a staff's job. They just want to have input.
Input, recommendations.
Yes, in other words, if there's an activity that they don't think is working and they prefer another activity, they would have that close conversation with staff and say, you know, rather than day-to-day, that would be...
I would feel more comfortable with that, with recommendations and then have somebody else professionally keep the calendar because, you know, there's a lot of things that could go on in that park and we need to make sure that we don't have any overlap and things like that. So I'm fine with that.
I'm all for people having a say in what's going to be happening there in the park. So if there's a way we can have suggestions, get the staff, and perhaps they'll come up with ideas that we never even considered, that will be spectacular. So I'm always for that.
So subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Board?
Well, I would say, you know, I think we need to engage Art Cader, ask him, or run it by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, if they even want to take it on, something like that. I mean, I'd want to get feedback from the stakeholders that you've mentioned.
That's a good idea. All right, well, why don't we bring it up with Mr. Cader and see what he recommends and we can bring it back before us at some point? Yes, ma'am?
That was my question. Should I direct the staff then to schedule it for the next Parks and Rec Board, which is in July, and then schedule council discussion afterwards?
Yeah, sure. You have consensus. All right, anything else on that one? Okay. 11.3.
So I had just asked for an update on timing for distribution of the, like, North Greenwood ARPA grants. Somebody's going to give an update?
Yeah.
Sorry, it was such a long meeting.
That's quite right. I'm freezing, so I'm chattering. Denise Anderson, Economics Development and Housing. So this agenda item came to us as a broad grants update for the distribution of ARPA funds. So we will talk specifically about North Greenwood, but I thought I would give a little background and history, first of all, on the five programs that we're talking about. So as a reminder, in November, we talked about the distribution process for the Affordable Housing Grants and Loans. That's a $3.3 million allocation. Cultural Affairs Nonprofit Grants, that was $1 million. Education Grants of $750,000. The, actually, there was a startup funding for North Greenwood, Syria, $5 million, but we got direction to pull 1.4 of that forward for the North Greenwood Community Grants. And $1 million for Pinellas Community Foundation together, that is $7.45 million. So to date, we have encumbered 5.84 or 5 million. We have then, they're available, 1.6. We have dispersed 885,000 with, that means the pending disbursements are $4.96 million. So that, the numbers that I have, this is as of Friday, that's 84 projects. And the Affordable Housing Grants and Loans... And, and the affordable housing grants and loans, we have 48 of those projects, one of which is a rehab loan, 35 emergency grants of up to $5,000, six purchase assistance loans and/or grants, there's a combination there available, and residential development of six loans. So some of the challenges that we've had within the Affordable Housing Division, and our challenges are minor because we already had applications built. We already had processes and staff on, on site, if you will, to be able to implement these or sort of add-on programs for us. But there are still some challenges and as per the norm, it's collection of required documentation. One of the little nuances, and you've experienced this recently with 1454 South MLK, is really understanding how to deliver solar feasibility and education programs for eligible recipients. So take the challenges that we had in bringing two dollars for the 1454 South MLK townhomes, now apply that to residential, single-family, and understanding how to bring forward solar for those who may not be familiar with solar, understand pros and cons or challenges of having solar on your home, some of those questions about insurance and other things. So really nailing down that component as we start talking about single-family. We've not done any single-family solar. And then, of course, the general market conditions that play for real estate and generally construction related to real estate prices, qualifying for first mortgages and the availability of trades contractors and materials. For us, the prioritization of the dispersment of funds is the applications are reviewed as they're received, generally on first, first come, first in, first out basis, but each program operates different lengths of time within that affordable housing allocation. For Cultural Affairs and Nonprofit Grants, the challenge is, again, you'll hear this is the collection of required documents and the determination of payment schedules. For prioritization of funds, they're focused on agreements. They did transmit those agreements to grantees on June 9th for their review. They expect executed agreements by this Friday and the funds will be dispersed within 14 days thereafter. So by June 30th, funds for their program should be en route. On the education grants, some of the challenges, really minor, have been related to legal review of a statute as it relates to BTRs. The city clerk's office has executed four of the five agreements. The fifth is in negotiation with St. Pete College, but I think they're at or near the finish line on that. And prioritization, these grantees are getting the $75,000, which is 50% of their project costs upfront, with the others of $75,000 expected at about the six-month period thereafter. And it's subject to completion and submittal of satisfactory reporting requirements. On the North Greenwood Community Grants Program, the biggest challenge is there have been staffing. You heard Jay Matthews talk about that earlier in today's CRA meetings, that they are severely understaffed and have been in the recruitment and pre-interview stages or in that phase right now to, to resolve that. Communication and realistic timeframe with the, the grantees. They've communicated with nine organizations directly providing each with a 60 to 90-day window. And some of the other challenge, another challenge is really the scope or range for these projects. There's a wide variety. Very, having reviewed these applications, I can tell you there's a very wide variety of projects and the anticipated outcomes are virtually different for every single allocation. There were 25 projects. So you have a challenge with one, you multiply that by 25. For prioritization for the dispersment of funds, the goal is to complete all the grant agreements by June 30th. And Jay has communicated with them that, or rather, she has established a goal of the first round of agreements to grow up by 616, that's this Friday, the second round by June 23rd, and the third round by June 30th. Prioritization is for those projects that are ready to go. There were some projects that had very clear objectives and they had structures in place in order to be able to receive and then expend funds. And so I would imagine that that's really first priority at this stage. Pinellas Community Foundation, this is a sub-grant program wherein we provided a contract. You all voted on that in early January and they are underway. They have a contract with Homeless Leadership Alliance to deliver programming. That was for the Capri Mobile Home Park relocation. They are still working with clients and expending those funds related to that effort. And they have just closed out a call for letters of interest. And in fact, one of my staff members is on that committee meeting on June 21st. That's for the Phase Two. And so they're awarding up to $650,000 for that Phase Two. So they're in good shape and have expressed no major concerns. They're following the plan that they expressed to you in January. So I'm available to answer questions as are staff members of the other departments. So Rosemarie is here, Mica and Amber on Cultural Affairs and Jay on North Greenwood.
Okay, any questions?
I had a question about the Capri, the Pinellas Community Foundation. So I know that they have a contract with HLA for Capri Mobile Home Park, but that's been closed, so they're still working with clients.
They are.
For Phase Two, what?
No, they are still working with clients at Capri, that were at Capri Mobile Home Park on housing navigation and some of those short-term solutions. So some of them are in short-term housing and they're working on permanent transitional.
Okay. And what's Phase Two?
Phase Two, so if you'll, if you'll forgive me, Capri Mobile Home Park, I would view that as Phase One, that is a separate contract.
Yep.
They're now working on Phase Two of that 1 million dollar application or 1 million dollar allocation, and that's providing up to $650,000. 50 to 325,000 dollars is what they're looking for for subcontractors to deliver certain services, social service and otherwise. Not all that dissimilar to Capri.
Subcontractors for Clearwater, for in Clearwater?
Yeah, so Pinellas Community Foundation will allocate to one or more, excuse me, two or more sub-grantees for delivery of, of services. And since you're familiar with Capri Mobile Home Park, that's housing navigation, emergency or urgent social service needs. So similar to really what they've done with Homeless Leadership Alliance, but to the broader Clearwater community, yes.
Okay, so that could be a landlord liaison, right?
It could be.
Navigator, all that stuff?
It could be. The, the review of letters for, of interest or letters of intent have been received and committee will be meeting, as I said, on June 21st. From that, they'll invite a full application from those that they desire to engage with or possibly engage with. So.
Okay.
But I don't know that, we won't know the outcome of that until after June 21.
Okay. So I was going to advocate for things like a housing navigator or a landlord liaison just for Clearwater residents that are maybe facing eviction. But if we have $650,000 of ARPA funds that have been allocated or have been, we're working with the Pinellas Community Foundation, that could be a, one of those positions for a number of years. I mean, right? That would, it's not just a one-year and done, it's $650,000. So we could have a housing navigator, landlord liaison for two or a three-year contract for Clearwater residents, conceivably?
And conceivably, we could because our obligation is to expend the funds. We're expending them through Pinellas Community Foundation. But truly, I mean, we did not put shackles on that contract in terms of, we anticipated that they would review those letters of interest, keeping in mind that for many, the nonprofits have capacity issues in being able to deliver these things. So I really just don't know what to expect. I've not seen any dismittals. I don't have insight into anything that's going on at this point other than those LOIs have been received.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Any new business?
I'd like to discuss potentially changing the election date to coincide with primary or, or general election when there'll be more people at the polls, unless it's too late to do that. Mr. Margolis?
I would say that if, I would say that we're probably up against that, that window if we are going to make that change for the effect of the next election. You'd probably have to do it immediately, I would say. I mean, do you even have?
Not even time.
I don't think we have time for that.
We don't even have time for that because it's so much to change. You have the code provisions in terms of qualifying and then still have to even pass the ordinance, call the referendum to make that change.
But we don't.
Oh, that's true, yeah, we don't.
But we don't, so it's just the normal ordinance, so.
So.
It's, is it March 19th?
It's March 19th next year, but our election period does start in September. But I, I think that's like, we're calling it really close. We could do it if he's able to make that change.
It is a primary, right?
March is a primary.
Yeah.
Presidential primary.
Right, I, I believe, long as it's over, I do believe this could, that could be done because that's an unusual example where most changes in the charter require a referendum. That is the only exception, actually, that I know of in Florida law that is actually a modification to our charter that does not require referendum, which is kind of an unusual exception. So if that is something the council wants to discuss, that could certainly, in my opinion, be, be put on the next agenda. But we are, we are up against that window. And so if that is a change that the council is interested in exploring for the next election cycle, which would, as we know, be in March of 2024, I would need to get that direction from council very, very, very soon in order to get an ordinance enacted potentially in time for the next election cycle.
Is it the month that you, that you want to change or the primary? Because if it's the primary, then we, then in March, is it?
Well, you know, it's not the month, no.
It's the primary? You want the primary?
Yeah.
More numbers?
Right.
Okay, number five.
Which we have, we have.
It does coincide with the presidential preference primary. And just to add that, the committee, the charter review committee just did discuss it the last meeting and have actually, because they did not have enough quorum to have a supermajority vote, it is being discussed again Wednesday. So they have discussed it and it was, I guess, kind of split down the middle.
Okay, all right. Any other new business?
I'd like to have a discussion about changing our configuration of a year-round NAHAB, Neighborhood Affordable Housing Advisory Board, to a year-round AHAC, which I sit on the AHAC, it's a state requirement to get that funding that an elected official has to be on at a certain number of months. And also that I'm required to meet, I think it's two or three times a year with other elected officials who sit on an AHAC. Or we don't get our funding. So I'm reminded of that generally by Chuck Lane, like, make sure you go to that meeting. We don't want to compromise our funding. So I go, which is a Zoom, which isn't a big deal. But it's to share best practices and what other municipalities and counties in our larger geographic region are doing. And I asked them the last time we met, how many of them have a year-round AHAC? And they all do. And so I wanted to have ours, I'd like a discussion about that. I think it would provide some consistency and, and it wouldn't have to meet monthly. It could meet every other month, but, but I'd like to have that discussion.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, good meeting, see you Thursday.